Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 21 Town Council meeting. I’m going to make an announcement in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make your presence known. And I want to tell people that the town, in fact, is recording this meeting. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors, Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Lutke.
Here.
Mendez. Neary.
Here.
Penn.
Here.
Schnapp.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
We have 12.
Thank you. Counselor Tamish?
If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Leading us tonight will be our own Betty Lutke. Betty is a 30-year veteran of the United States Air Force. She completed 10 years of active-duty service and 20 years in the Reserve retiring at the rank Colonel. She has served at all levels of command from the Joint Staff’s National Military Command Center in the Pentagon to deployments as diverse as recovery operations in Florida following Hurricane Andrew and command and control of overflight operations in Uzbekistan in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. Betty, please.
Thank you. And I’m going to step down there to...
Yes, please.
Because I’m one of these folks for this opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity to do this. Thank you for the opportunity. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, President Penn. For the moment of silence, we’d like to pause to recognize the memory of Megan Moore, a resident of Centerville who died a violent death and gone and is gone too soon. We send our sympathies to her family. I’d also like to recognize Judy DeRocher. The West Barnstable community and beyond share the sad news that longtime West Barnstable resident Judy DeRocher died on March 11th. Judy volunteered for many organizations, including serving on the town’s Conservation Commission from 1973 to 1979, holding the positions of Treasurer in 1977 and Vice Chair in 1979. As a guest, she regularly attended the Agricultural Commission meetings from 2009 to 2011. Judy also led walks at the Meeting House Farm during the town’s October walking weekends over various years. Judy served on the West Barnstable Civic Association Board of Directors as long as I can remember, doing so long before I arrived in West Barnstable. Judy helped lead the town’s acquisition of the 22-acre Conant property in 2000 for open space, which subsequently became known as Meeting House Farm, operating as a nonprofit. Judy effectively managed this property at little expense to the town. Judy served as Meeting House Farm’s president for 20 years, spearheading the popular garden and outdoor programs that served the town of Barnstable residents and scores of garden lovers. Asset Management Director David Anthony once told me, “Judy proved that a nonprofit could effectively manage a town property like Meeting House Farm for the betterment of our town’s charm and quality of life.” She was a champion for that property, and its success and beauty today are due to her leadership. Judy was unanimously selected to be the West Barnstable Citizen of the Year in 2008. She was also the recipient of Barnstable Land Trust Founder’s Award in 2015. Judy was a passionate advocate of the environment, an avid gardener, poet, and gifted teacher. Judy brought her intellect, diplomatic skills, humor, and grace to every endeavor, making our community a better place and leaving a void like none other. Judy will be missed many, especially those of us who were lucky enough to have known her. We are much richer having had Judy in our lives and in our community.
Thank you. And just one more minute for you to remember those who are special to you. Good evening. Before I get into public comment, I’m going to read a written statement that I shared with my fellow counselors, just to provide... because I want to share it with the public at this time, and this is the only way I have to do that. This was written on last Sunday, two Sundays ago, March 10th, to my fellow counselors. I’m writing to you today to set the record straight and give you the background or the outline that you received in your mailbox from an anonymous person. Know that it is a work in progress, an incomplete internal document. Here is its history. In early January, at one of the first meetings Vice President Tamish and I held with town management, I asked about the town’s policy regarding land and development of housing, et cetera, and why the town was not more proactive. We were advised that the town had been operating under a policy not to acquire land for any purpose other than to protect our wells and to let the private sector dictate what gets built where. This policy had been articulated by previous councils. I asked if this policy/ philosophy was in writing anywhere, and the town manager indicated it was not. And if the council wanted to change this philosophy, it was the purview of the council to do so. A few weeks later, Vice President Tamish and I presented a rough outline to town management that represented a new direction for the town. I did this as a first step, as they are the ones who would manage the change. After much discussion, I made a list of the edits they suggested. At the end of the meeting, I asked them to contact the Planning and Development Department to inquire when Elizabeth Jenkins and her management team were available to meet and to schedule a meeting with them. In the meantime, I updated the outline to reflect the changes the town manager and assistant manager had suggested. At this point, the town management expressed appreciation that the new town policy/ philosophy/guidance would be in writing going forward. Town Manager Els informed us of a meeting date and time with Planning and Development staff about a week later. In the meantime, I received a call from Counselor Leveque inquiring about a letter sent to Planning and Development. I told him there was no letter sent to Planning and Development, which is true, as up to that point, only the town managers and Craig and I had a copy of the outline, which was marked confidential as it was only a draft. He asked if I would share it with him, and I declined to do so as it was a working document, and we had not yet presented it or received input from Planning and Development. It was incomplete. I told him that eventually it would come to Town Council for final input and discussion. Town management, Craig and I, met with Elizabeth, Jim, Caitlin, and Kyle from Planning and Development, which was step two in the process. We handed them the draft document and had a discussion about why it was created and reviewed its content. It was obvious they wanted more time to digest its content, so I asked them to get back to us with their comments, suggestions, questions, and ideas. Currently, that’s where we are. This is as of March 10th. There was no further discussion, as we are still waiting for their input before the outline is finalized. We are stuck at step two. After it’s finalized, it will come to Town Council for further discussion and input, which would be step three. I fully expected that any philosophical changes would be reviewed by the full council, although I do not recall past councils bringing their philosophies to the full council for discussion. Our conversations with Planning and Development were not done in secret, and were done with the town management’s full cooperation and in their presence. The intent and purpose of the meeting with Planning and Development was to solicit their ideas and feedback, as stated above. We are still waiting for their feedback. Nothing in this document should come as a surprise to anyone, as every issue addressed within it has been a topic of conversation throughout the town for quite some time. Now you have the truth. That is what I communicated to my fellow counselors. Since March 10th, when this was written, there’s an update, which I will also share with you. We have met with Planning and Development, where they provided their response. Now that we have their response, we need to provide our feedback to them for the draft that they provided to us before the policy is ready for Town Council discussion, and that’s where we are. Thank you for listening. Next on the agenda is public comment. Please, if you’re here to address public comment, identify yourself, tell us which village you live in, and you have three minutes. Thank you. And please try to address issues and policy and not people. Thank you.
So now, now it seems we have the truth. We did not have the truth two weeks ago.
Is your mic on?
Oh, now it’s on.
Thank you.
So now it seems we have the truth. Did not have the truth two weeks ago. My name is Rob Brennan. Live in Osterville. I’m here representing myself. This exciting news, there’s a change of course underway. We just heard this explained away. We didn’t hear it explained away until it was exposed. This is an agenda that was hidden. It’s an agenda when, two weeks ago, I stepped up and brought it to the attention of the council. I was told I was falling for it. This was a fake. This was altered twice. This was, in fact, we just, we now know, the agenda that was walked in to management’s office. This agenda presupposes outcomes that are important tonight, because you’re going to be asked again to consider whether to support ad hoc committees where the council president has a sole authority to appoint members of the public. We know the issues articulated by the council president. We know her stance on this. We know the messaging of “We’re full, keep Cape Cod authentic.” It’s a bumper sticker we’ve all seen. Council president has messaged this on her own car. This hidden agenda and this predetermined outcomes of fixing a broken zoning and parking in the downtown that is only for projects and households that can support two vehicles per each has lost the public’s support and the public’s faith in this. These are issues that should never have been delegated or kicked down to a stacked committee where the very narrow 7-6 majority that is in this council could then be stacked with an appointed subcommittee. These are important issues that need to be debated here at the full council. There is a microphone. Every single member of the public can come and speak their mind and give you input. I want to be here speaking about housing. I want to share my experience as a, as an attorney. I want to share my experience as a developer. I want to share my experience as someone who’s at the table at the state and national level trying to wrestle with these hard questions of how do we build housing that’s climate resilient, net zero, and affordable. It needs to stay here. And when you hear opinions voiced tonight, and you’re going to hear them, of people that don’t perhaps agree with your own position, the default cannot be to attack them personally, to try to discredit the messenger. I experienced that two weeks ago. It’s below the station of every single member of this council. Every single person in the public should feel the ability to step to this microphone and voice their opinion without being discredited, without being attacked, and without a council, that’s wrong on points that they’re doing that. I hope that you’ll consider that. I hope that you’ll keep these issues at the, at the council and that the consideration of creating ad hoc committees is tabled so that the real work can go forward in the form that it should. Thank you.
My name is Tara Vargas Wallace, and I’m a member of the NAACP and the Executive Director of Amplify POC. I am here tonight regarding equity. I recently read an op-ed that stated that the laws are made by those who show up. So here I am. I will not be intimidated. I will not be bullied. I have been watching this council and its adversarial approach to housing of all types in our community. I’m here to offer my experience and thoughts, not only on housing on Main Street in Hyannis, but in Barnstable in general. As the Executive Director of Amplify POC, a racial equity organization, I am here together with the NAACP in solidarity as we stand together to move forward with equitable housing in Barnstable. I am respectfully requesting that you delay the vote on this resolution to form these committees until public interviews have been conducted to ensure diversity. Anything less, I am sure, would not serve the president’s commitment to transparency, which she campaigned in on her last election. I ask that this item be tabled tonight. Please do not vote in favor of item 2024-166 until we can all be assured that proper procedures have been followed to ensure that all voices are heard in the conversation. Thank you.
Pete Sampu, West Barnstable. I am here once again in an attempt to bring reason and science to the council’s evaluation of offshore wind safety. For background, an electrical substation is a concentrated collection of transformers that enable electricity to be transmitted at different voltages securely and reliably. They are a common and necessary component of our electrical grid. Dielectric fluids are necessary for the safe operation of transformers to insulate and dissipate heat as the transformers change the voltage of incoming electricity to that going out. Historically, dielectric fluids used in the transformers did incorporate PCBs and PFASs, and I think the concern many still have that these health-worrying chemicals might be in the dielectric fluids of the substations being proposed. I must reference the dielectric fluids that Avengrid is using in the Vineyard Wind Project and will likely use for other substation development. I have here a data safety sheet for that dielectric fluid, Aragon High Volt Rumor Numeral Number Two. I’ve taught chemistry at the university level, so while I am not a certified safety inspector, I understand this information and the potential hazards this dielectric fluid poses to the environment and human health. This fluid is derived from petroleum, and it’s a highly refined mineral oil that poses a human threat, health threat, only if it is breathed in via mist or liquid. It is not even regulated by any industry as dangerous goods. Less than 0.3% of this fluid is an antioxidant, BHT, which is commonly used in food as a preservative. Furthermore, this fluid is insoluble in water, so it does not move in the soil, and it is not expected to be harmful to aquatic organisms. It contains no ingredients listed as toxic to reproduction and is certified to be PCB-free. It also does not contain any PFAS compounds. It is my educated assessment that new substations being constructed are safer for our groundwater, our community, and ecosystem health than the current substations with their older dielectric-filled transformers. We should be welcoming the change Avengrid is bringing to our electrical grid, both because of the environmental benefits of renewable energy and the safer construction and operation of the new substations compared to those that currently exist. The concern raised by some citizens of the potential pollution and health worries from substation transformer dielectric fluids is without merit. Merit. Thank you for listening.
I think this is going to be a long night. My name is Lynn Rhodes. I work in Hyannis. I am the executive member and treasurer for the Zion Union Heritage Museum, and I’m also the president for the Cape Cod branch of the NAACP. Where to start? I’ve spent enough time up here, I’ve gotten to know many of you individually. I happened to, on a whim, look for an apartment. The apartment that I found was $2,100 for one bedroom. That means if 30% of my income, I need to make $99,000 a year. If you think that someone who’s going to be serving you coffee at Dunkin’ Donuts, serving you a hamburger at McDonald’s can afford that is astronomical. Housing is a real issue. Please, as Tara said, we need this ad hoc committees reviewed. They need transparency. People cannot afford to live in Hyannis. They can’t afford to live on Cape. You don’t have the people here to serve. The tourists come in and they are angry. They have to wait forever. Service was terrible. One person is serving more tables than are necessary. People can’t afford to live here. It’s going to affect the economy. We need housing. Thank you.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Ellis Sampu. I’m a precinct 11 voter. I urge all of you tonight to delay the vote or vote no on item 166, the resolve establishing certain ad hoc committees. I’m a community organizer, and I work in affordable housing. I spend a great deal of time supporting the creation of affordable housing on town-owned properties and supporting the bylaw changes necessary to make those plans a reality, as well as helping municipalities build trust with their constituents. Barnstable’s Form-Based Code has been held up as an example across our county as a success in zoning reform, and it took years to achieve. It speeds up the timeline for housing development and allows us to build the housing we desperately need in a timely manner. This Form-Based Code was developed with community engagement, and it does represent the desires of our townspeople. Our town planner has been featured in four or five community forums on zoning that I’ve sat in in the past season, and Barnstable should be proud of the zoning reforms it’s made in recent history. In other towns, the committee that makes recommendations on strategies to create affordable housing is often the Affordable Housing Trust. Barnstable already has an Affordable Housing Trust, and its members are experts in what they do, some of whom work at the state level to assist other towns with their housing development. To be clear, a process to review housing production strategies and make recommendations already exists, and that process works. You don’t have to say you oppose the creation of affordable and attainable housing. You simply have to add more roadblocks, roadblocks to prevent it from being built. Traditional zoning is a practice that excludes certain people from our communities. These restrictions make it harder for many marginalized communities to find housing here: working-class and low-income people, people of color, older folks who need to downsize, young people, and the list goes on and on. Essentially, anyone who does not already own a home is negatively affected, and, as many speakers tonight have already mentioned, we are in a severe housing crisis. Restrictive zoning prevents us from building diverse, sustainable communities, and it prevents developers from providing creative solutions to our housing crisis. It’s a privilege that I’m here tonight, and I’d like to say thank you to all of you for giving me the time to speak. I have the free time and the policy fluency to speak in front of Town Council, but by default, most of the people, most of the people affected by our housing crisis cannot be here. At best, our citizens have fragile trust in their government. The message that this resolve sends is that our voices don’t matter because Town Council has a differing opinion. This puts too much decision-making power into the hands of one person. It’s an overstep of Town Council’s function. It’s sidestepping boards and committees that have already been long established to handle these tasks. Ad hoc committees have no standing and, at best, are advisory. Is it not a conflict of interest to have ad hoc committees, a majority membership that our town councilors then make recommendations to Town Council? It’s obstructionist and undemocratic. Thank you for your time tonight.
My name is Megan Moore, resident of Marstens Mills. I do have to step out as soon as I comment because I am going to work, so I apologize to people ahead of me. So between, after this past couple weeks events, it’s apparent that there are some in our Town Council that don’t feel their actions warrant scrutiny. Between the selection of members for the Appointments Committee, the lack of transparency, communication, and impartiality that I’ve seen, and the clear bias against those who have real struggles in Barnstable, I have a hard time trusting the words or actions of some on this Town Council. Town Council President Penn didn’t even have the courage to comment on a letter she wrote while insisting at the last meeting it was anonymous and therefore not worthy of thought, comment, or action. These are perfect examples of why I spoke out against freshman members of the Town Council as leaders, as did others. These are not the actions of a leader. Town Council President Penn has previously mentioned a lack of institutional knowledge of one LCPC member and questioned the Hyannis address of another LCPC member. These volunteers are Latina and Black, respectively. Leadership invites courage. It invites cooperation. It engages in teamwork with others to solve common problems and actively listens to those who come before them. They don’t interrogate them from a dais, as I was interrogated at the last meeting. Additionally, I would like clarification regarding what exactly “We’re full and keep Cape Cod authentic” means. What does that look like and who does that include? What does “authentic” mean? This bumper sticker is featured on cars of our Town Council president and many others. Many of these people own multiple homes. Many of them are not from Cape Cod. So what does “authentic” mean? Taking all of this into consideration, the statements and actions from Town Council leadership reek of a gentrified version of redlining. All of this. As a citizen and someone who has struggled with housing insecurity for decades here, it’s embarrassing and infuriating. Expanding upon that, as referenced in the last letter that was revealed at the last meeting, who are the appropriate partners referred to in this letter? There is an obvious support to slow down or stop growth, especially as it pertains to housing, change zoning, oppose density, and increase sprawl. I don’t see anyone fighting the bills of single-family homes that are 2,000, 3,000 square feet. The process for many who fight housing is delay, 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 until developers aren’t interested in building here anymore. I would like the citizens that live here, that were born here, that were raised here, that move here, to feel like they have something in their future, that their children have something in their future, and that, if possible, maybe they can have children in the future when they can afford to live in a place that has more than one bedroom. Thank you.
My name is Ally Maloney. I live in Marstens Mills, and I’m the owner of AMG Realty on the Cape here in Barnstable, a commercial real estate business. After reading that there were certain individuals who were pushing to roll back the downtown zoning, I felt that I wanted to share my thoughts on zoning. I believe that successful governing isn’t based simply on the ability to change. It’s based on the ability to change fast enough to take advantage of the opportunities that come forward, changes that will benefit the local community. Prior to the implementation of the Form-Based zoning, the downtown zoning regulations were constrictive, constrictive to economic growth. Landlords often could not rent to qualified tenants because the tenants’ businesses did not squarely fit into a specific use allowed. Due to the tiny lot sizes in these areas, owners had few options for redeveloping structures. The zoning did not address the current climate. The Form-Based zoning has allowed officials to respond to the need... The Form-Based zoning has allowed officials to respond to the needs of the public, to provide housing and to allow property owners to redevelop their properties and reduce vacancy. As much as change can be hard, zoning bylaws are not intended to stay the same for decades. Mashpee changes their zoning all the time to accommodate businesses and the current climate. If you look in the use regulation tables, in the zoning bylaws for Mashpee, Yarmouth, Dennis, Sandwich, they list hundreds of uses, and they keep them up to date. Some of the uses listed in the Mashpee Use Regulation Table include food trucks, microbrewery, food incubator, computerized golf. A business owner can open the zoning bylaws, look at the use regulation table, and find out if their use is allowed. The current Barnstable zoning regulations for business districts, that's B, BA, and UB, included, include but are not limited to: blacksmith, confectioner, dressmaker, dyer, furrier, milliner, paper hanger, shoemaker, shoe repairer, shoe shiner, tailor, tinsmith, telephone exchange, telegraph office, and wheelwright. The rezoning of the downtown area was needed. A change was needed, and it was to encourage investment in Hyannis, and it's working. The product that you see may look different than you expected. Remember, it's based on the demand.
That's three minutes, if you could finish up, please.
Demand is fluent. Business owners can't get help. They can't, people can't afford to live here. Form-Based zoning allows property owners to develop their properties. It allows for the town to work with them and to welcome people into businesses and new homes and individuals into new homes to live, and it must not be undone. Thank you.
Good evening, President Penn, councilors. My name is Suzanne Conlee, and I live in Barnstable in the village of Austerville. At the March 7 Town Council meeting, a number of your constituents, myself among them, offered carefully-prepared and researched comments that questioned the opinion expressed by Mr. Dan Santos at the March 1 Special Town Meeting, that our worries about the dielectric fluid proposed for use by Avengrid posed no danger to our drinking water. Your constituents, your constituents who come here in all sincerity to be listened to by you, those of us who spoke to this issue that night, received barely a response by the council for what we had to say. But we were speaking, apparently, to a distracted and apparently divided Town Council that night. Frankly, I found it troubling that the only response seemed to be a special invitation to Mr. Santos, a town employee, to come forward and repeat his claims during public comment. With all due respect to Mr. Santos, we wanted to hear from you on this issue. Now comes this, a so-called error of representation by Avengrid personnel about materials they plan to load onto land very vulnerable to contamination. However you feel about the proposed cable landings in our town, in the future, please give well-informed citizens the consideration and hearing that our comments, knowledge, and concerns deserve. I do want to emphasize that our group and other groups in town that have been questioning and fighting these proposals by Avengrid are not necessarily against, we have said this 1,000 times if we've said it once, the development of renewable energy in our state. What we have questioned is a developer's decision to land these on our public recreational beaches, to run 20 miles of massive duck bank through our villages and residential neighborhoods, and then to build three more, perhaps even four, from what we've learned recently, substations on land that is very vulnerable to contamination because it covers our, the sole source aquifer, and as we all know, the water is very close to the surface, as close as five to eight feet in some locations. So I just want to emphasize that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Karen McGuire, and I'm a member of the Greater Hyannis Civic Association and also president of Safe Twin Brooks. Matt Levesque, you probably remember a meeting that we had in Mark L.'s office. It was after the Hyannis Chamber, Hyannis Chamber of Commerce had a meeting, and wonderful presentations by everyone. Chrissy Sandatori was there. I said, "You did a great job." Hack was there, and they said, "Housing, housing, housing." It was, it was a great meeting, and Mark else was there. And I said to Mark, "Mark, there are a number of newspaper opinion pieces and letters to the editor that are getting very ugly regarding housing, regarding name-calling, calling members of Safe Twin Brooks nimby, nothing listening to, you know, natural resources." And I said, I said, "This doesn't look good for the town." And, and so what Town Council, what the Town Manager said is that, "Karen, you know, I have nothing to do with the media. You know, I can't control what's being said." But I think, Council Levesque, you heard what I was saying in terms of, if things get this ugly, nothing is accomplished. And now what I'm seeing with this Town Council, Town Council and the public right now is it's getting really ugly again. And I have some, I have a letter that I want to read if I have enough time, but let me know if we have enough time. But shame on us for getting to this point. Everybody here on this Town Council was elected fairly, and here we are, bickering among ourselves, and there are things that are going on in the community. People are making assumptions about what people are saying. If you look at Felicia Penn's back window that has a stick, has stickers all over it, there is a sticker that says, "It's not Twin Brooks, it's not either/or, it's both," and you see trees and you see housing. Okay? We have got to get this together. This decisiveness does no good for anybody in this community. There is too much stuff to get done. So, I, Rob Brennan, I met you at a, at a chamber meeting, and I said, because we were trying to preserve overbuilding by a national developer with not a good track record on that site, and I wanted to meet with Rob. I said, "Rob, you've done some great development here in, in Hyannis. Can we talk?" "Yeah, Karen, Karen, sure, sure. Here, look at what I did over in Martha's Vineyard." For some reason, that got lost. That dialogue didn't happen. "Karen, I'm 10 minutes from my house. I'll give you a call." Well, he never got a call, and for whatever reason, Rob. And then, did somebody say, "Don't talk to Twin Brooks because they're anti-housing?" We're not anti-housing. We're never anti-housing. We started off trying to save it as a park, and guess what? People like Felicia Penn said, "Hey, wait a second. You need something, you don't just need open space, you need some housing here." But the housing that was developed, and I have to say, a number of people who are sitting behind here said, "It is too much for that site."
Karen, if you could finish up, please. That's three minutes.
Here's to moving away from chronic name-calling and on to constructive, fact-based, solution-oriented dialogue about our multi-faceted community needs. Thank you very much.
Mark Wharton in West Barnstable. I spoke to the previous council about this subject, but I wanted to bring the new council up to date. There's a pollution problem in West Barnstable, north of Route 6A. That's probably the worst one in our town on the north side, anyway. Back in the 1930s, the state came in and straightened Route 6A at the intersection of 132. They created those two islands that were originally not there. They pushed that hill back to the north, and then they started digging trenches all the way up to the community college, which obviously wasn't there at that time, and they created an underground drainage system. Over a mile of road surface is collected and dumped to the west towards Sandwich, approximately 25 yards north of Route 6A, and approximately 75 yards west of Buttonwood Lane. It dumps right into somebody's yard at 1780 Route 6A, a 15-inch pipe. I brought Representative Exaros out there because he wanted to put boots on the ground. I went to the county commissioners. I've been to the Barnstable Association of Recreational Shellfishers, so I'm back here asking you folks if you would please write a letter to the governor to give, to ask her to tell the DOT, Department of Transportation in, I think it's Taunton District 5, that controls this area, to get over there and put in some sort of a system that can collect the sand and cigarette butts and pollution and litter that's dumping out. About 20 years ago, I ran into my neighbor, Patrick Page, one day, and he said, "Come over to my house today if you can. I want to show you something." So I went over his house, and we walked out to the edge of his lawn, and he said, "Mark, take a walk out there a little further into the, into the field." So I walked out, and my feet started to squish because it had been raining the day before, and I looked down, and it was sunny out, and I got the, the reflection of the petroleum product off the fluid that was out there in his, off of his grass. And I looked over, and I said, "I can't believe it. That's terrible." And he said to me, "Well, how would you like to live here? My well is right over there." So I go back, and I, and he says to me, "You're a shellfisher, aren't you?" And I said, "Yeah." He says, "Well, you know, during these light rains, my wife and I worry about the, the roads, because roads just get cleaned off during the light rains, and it all ends up in our yard." He goes, "But as a shellfisherman, the heavy rains flush this stuff out through our yard into Brick Yard Creek and out into Barnstable Harbor, into your shellfish beds, into your recreational and your commercial shellfish beds." And he, he's been fighting this thing for decades, and he can't get anybody to pay attention, so I'm asking you to do what you can to help us out over there in West Barnstable. You've got a, something coming up about drainage later on in your meeting tonight. Hopefully, you'll pass that legislation and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is your favorite John Julius from Hyannis, and I'll start tonight by saying you guys are doing a fabulous job. Quite honestly, as a resident, and I can tell you, I've been coming to this podium since around 1997, and I've spoken literally hundreds of times. I take offense to the perception tonight of the attacks on you as our governing leadership. You're doing a great job. I want to clarify something. The "we are full," that was me. That "we are full," that was me. I wrote an article last April 2nd in the Cape Cod Times, and it was on affordable housing, and it talked about the truth of affordable housing. I spent 24 and a half years in the building business. I've been in real estate since before 1980. In my, in my real estate and building career, and I'm damn proud of it, I've sold over 6,000 homes in condominiums, over 6,000. I'm a real estate expert, and, and when I tell you that we're full, what that means is Hyannis is full. We have in Hyannis now over 15,000 people. The town of Barnstable has somewhere around 50,000, and 15,000 of them are squeezed into Hyannis. We are full. We have a water shortage in Hyannis. We have lawyers coming to this podium, maybe a couple of builders. They'll never mention anything about that water shortage of 1.87 million gallons. I'm going to mention it, and I'm going to keep coming here and mentioning it, because I'm a resident who has to pay for that, and come July 4th, one, one year, we're going to turn our water on, and we may not have any. So you know something? If I took any attorney for any builder into court and stood before a reasonable judge with a reasonable philosophy, and they understood it, the judge, by virtue of that one aspect, would say, "I'm sorry. You're not going to be building and overrunning downtown Hyannis, just simply for the water alone." Let's not even talk about the sewer issue and the overload on the sewer for Hyannis. 15,000 people already. You know, there's seven villages in Barnstable. Hyannis is one of them. You want to build housing? Look, go and build it out there. I'm not anti-housing, but we are full. We're overloaded. Hyannis already has probably 17% to 20% quote-unquote "affordable housing." For the, for the 900th time, the state recommends every city in town have 10%. If we were a city or town on our own, Hyannis, we wouldn't have to worry about it. It wouldn't keep coming up. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, if they want to throw the stones, you know, I'll be walking out to my car in a few minutes, throw, throw all the stones you want at me. But I don't want people going after Felicia or anyone else because they have a sticker on their car that says, "We're full." That's me. Throw the stones at me. And all it, all I wrote in that article from last April 2nd, those were 100% categorical, undeniable facts.
That's three minutes, if you could finish up, please.
And I keep hearing the same thing over and over again. We, you know, "We're not going to have enough workers for the jobs." I sent all of you a letter on March 11th, and I said it then, and I'll keep saying it. I've been all over the place. I had open-heart surgery, no shortage on doctors and nurses. I go into Dunkin' Donuts, no problem. I go to Pro Cuts, get my hair cut. Plenty of people in there to cut my hair. So you know something? That narrative is going to continue and continue. One last thing. Two towns in the Commonwealth had guns stuck to their heads, Milton and Rentham. And they said, "You know what? Let, let's put it on the, let's put it on the ballot. The governor's forcing us to build all this housing. Let's put it on the ballot." Milton and Rentham both said, "No, we don't want anymore." I'd love to see it on this town's ballot, because I, my bet would go with the, with the, I don't want to be, be anti again. That's not my point. You can build all you want, but just make sure it's reasonable and sensible. Thank you very much.
My name is Mary Ann Barboza. Now, I heard, and I realize there's going to be a new housing committee started. I've never wanted to get on any kind of committee, but I'm telling you, I'm getting on this one. There will be no peace if I can't. And you know what made me decide I want to join this committee, this housing committee? Couple of weeks ago, I overheard a conversation when I was out from a person I thought I knew. He's only been here for, what, 30 years? Maybe 40? Made a comment, "Well, if people can't afford to live on the Cape, they shouldn't live here." I thought I would lose my mind. By the time I was done, he thought I lost my mind. Because, no. First off, generations of people have been here. Families have been here, keeping the, the community running. When all this so-called vacation money started coming in, we were keeping it going. And then all of a sudden, you allow the builders, the rich people, and all the people who to come here, who've been on the boards for like 30 and 40 years, "I'm a Cape Codder." No, you're not. You were a Cape Codder when you lived here when it was all woods, when the mall wasn't there, when the K-Marts weren't there, when nothing was here but woods. We kept it going, when it was all dirt, and we loved it. People cared about each other. Neighbors knew each other. And all of a sudden, here comes everybody telling us how to live. And now you want to say that we shouldn't be here because we're poor and it's for the rich? You all go somewhere else. If the rich got the money, go build you an island in Chinga Kunga, wherever you want to go. But don't come and tell us that we have to go. So if there's going to be a committee, I promise you, I want to be on this committee because we are not going to say, "Well, we've got so many homeless, we've got so many poor people. What are we going to do?" This wasn't always your little vacation place. This was our home. You all came here, jumping on the boards, and you destroyed it. You turned it into a city, and now you want to complain about all the city problems. Every city in the world has issues. You all created this one, not us. So don't think you're going to turn us away, because you can go to cemeteries and find my family in these Cape Cod cemeteries, going all the way back to 18 something. I'm not going nowhere, and I've had a lot of issues in my family lately, so I haven't been able to be around. But I promise you, I'm around, and I'm not going, and I am poor, and I have every right to be here. As poor as I am, I'll get through it.
My name's Carolyn Newman. I'm from Marston's Mills. Hi, Paula. And if the committee goes for it... And if the committee goes for him, I'm going to be right there with you. Wasn't that long ago when all of us were saying, "Thank you, essential workers. Thank you not only for being our doctors and our nurses, but keeping the hospital clean. Thank you for teaching our children and putting yourself in potential harm's way of getting, you know, deathly illness. Thank you for taking care of our elderly in the nursing homes." Well, now, I think in full transparency, we need to be saying, "Thank you. Here's some creative solutions in how we can do some housing." Whether it's zoning that needs to change, attitudes that need to change, all of that. So as you consider your votes today, let's keep everything open and in the public and take advantage of housing authorities and groups that are already in place. And let's make some real change, and let's make room, not just for, you know... I have three grandchildren that I would love for them to be able to stay on the Cape. Will they be able to? Doesn't look like it now. I am lucky. I am not poor, and I'm considering needing to move to a different place. Because even though I make a good salary, it's getting increasingly hard to live here. I'm seeing my neighborhood change. And instead of it being in Marston's Mills, where you typically see mostly year-round people, I'm seeing the few properties that come up for sale being bought up by people as their second or maybe their third homes. And it becomes obvious because when you walk your dog at night, there's a lot more houses that don't have lights on this time of year. And then all of a sudden, the neighborhood pond is full, you know, come summertime because it's more and more resident, you know, more and more part-time people. We're seeing more people come to our little neighborhood pond that are just renting the house for the week. That's a house that, not that long ago, two, three years ago, was a house that was filled with a family and children. And it's a sad change to see, and I'm hoping that with all of us working together, we can come up with some creative solutions, but to keep it all out in the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Asia, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Asia Graves. I am a victim advocate with human trafficking victims, as well as domestic violence, as well as the immigrant population on the Cape at the Health Ministry. We service about, in the past two months, about almost 2,000 people just in food insecurity, and I would like to thank Matt Levesque for helping with that. Thank you for that. Right now, the decisions this town council makes impacts every community that lives and works on the Cape. I have to work two jobs in order to be able to keep my affordable housing here because it's just too expensive. Your workforce can't afford to live here. They're driving over the bridge. And it's nice that, you know, there are certain town councilors like Gordon Starr and others who work, and they're trying to do things in regards to housing. My belief is that everyone deserves a right to live here. We are not full, and just so you know, the people that are in the room, we will keep showing up as long as we need to. If it has to be every meeting, I will put it on TikTok. I will make you TikTok viral. Matt Levesque knows how that feels, and I'm sure Felicia, you do not want that side effect. I am one of those people that will fight tooth and nail until the end, and I'm sure everyone in this room that supports housing knows that it needs to be done now. We don't need you to create new committees filled with your friends and allies. We need the public to be a part of that. My vote, my voice has not been allowed to even get a vote on your new committees, and I've been on that list for months, but yet my name is released to the public. And Ms. Councilwoman President, I do live in Barnstable, yes. You shouldn't have said anything about where my address was. I'm not speaking... I'm speaking in general. We're a community. We need housing. We need... We have jobs that are being left unfilled, and now we have people living four or five in a house in a two-bedroom because there is no housing on the Cape. It's nice that some of you all come from money and have never had to struggle. I wish that was my situation. I've been on my own since 14 years old. Some of you guys know me, but the thing is, I'm not going to walk away or leave this committee ever until I come to every single one of you. And when I come to every single one of you, I will put you on blast and put you on social media if you do not do the right thing. So please, do the right thing by the people. Betty, you said you were in favor of housing. If you're in favor of housing, you need to vote in favor of housing. No, there's no more of this, "Oh, I'm going to tiptoe around the issue." You all need to make a decision and stick with it. So please, do the right thing by the public, or I will make sure that the public comes here. I will make sure Marie Claire comes here, New York Times, USA Today, Katie Couric. I will bring all of those voices in this room, and you all will not like it. This is not a threat. It is a promise. So please do the right thing by the public and the population that's here, all of you, including the new members. Please do the right thing by the public. It's housing is necessary. It's needed now, and if it's not fixed, we will be on your tail every single day. So please do the right thing by the public. That's all we're asking you. Some of you all I've met with, some of you guys I've worked with, so please do the right thing, and if you're not willing to do the right thing, you don't need to be on this town council, and you should resign immediately.
Next.
I'll sign in in a minute. My name's Larry Moore. Many of you know me. And the nice thing about what's now happening is that now we're talking to you by first names: Matt, Paul, Chris, Charlie, all of you, first names. We're humanizing it. But the important thing that I want to stress, and I'm going to limit it to this topic, is that this process that Felicia is proposing in her capacity as president and in capacity and support with the other members of this council is a process. It's a method by which organizations customarily create, whether they... Certain committees or certain methods of communicating, there is a need to incorporate the members of this city, this town. And I support that. I think there's a measure. How do you go about doing it? How fast do you do it? An ad hoc committee, by its definition and nature, is a committee or any organization to do a specific project for a specific time period and to be open in public about it. That's what an ad hoc committee is. So if that's what we're dealing with, then it should be supported, and it's wide open. Felicia is not saying we're going to go behind closed doors. That's been done a lot in this town, and I've witnessed it, and I'm not going to start pointing fingers and naming it. But there's been secrecy here that has been appalling. This is an effort to abolish secrecy, to come open about it, but the method, the methodology cannot be and should not be limited by legal or consequences to what you do. If you're going to do something, say the method to do it, and do it. You don't need to bless God or country, whatever, to approve it. Okay? So that's where I am on it, and I don't think I need to say a whole lot more tonight, except to sign my name. Pen's John Dry.
Are you donating your pen, Larry?
Sure, I'll leave it. Comes from Cooperative Bank. They can have it. It'll run out anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom, Lynn?
Yes, I'll just take a moment to get them over.
Okay, thank you.
Our first speaker is Ravi Lesser. Ravi, you may unmute. You have three minutes. Ravi, you may unmute. You have three minutes. We'll try Tom Kirk. Tom, you may unmute. You have three minutes. If we could have one moment for technical difficulties. Please bear with us while we're having technical difficulties. We hope it's quickly, the resolution. Tom, could you test your mic, please? Tom? Grove, we can see you. Could you unmute, and you have three minutes? May we take a five-minute break while we try to figure this out, please?
Sure, let's make it 10. Okay, so we'll be back at, say, 7:15. That's a nice even number, okay? Which one? Thank you. We got our technology worked out now, so it's great when it works, not so much when it doesn't, but thank you for solving the problem.
Thank you. So we're going to start with Tom Kirk. Tom, if you may unmute, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm here. Good evening. I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments, and I'll try and be brief. Do we have a definitive word on the status of the watershed permit? The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection watershed permit that we've long sought, and we know that the CWMP was sent to the state in September to gain that permit. Have we gained that permit? It appears not. There's nothing at the Water Resources site or at the state site that says that we have the permit in the town of Barnstable. To that end, I just want to say that the CWMP is sort of this ever-changing and evolving document. And a year ago, the town council voted almost $34 million for studies and engineering plans relative to Main Street of Centerville from Mother's Park down to Craigville Beach, Long Beach, Craigville Beach Road over to Old Craigville Road, and up into the Craigville Village. At that time, everything was under Phase 2. At that point, half of that area became Phase 1, and the people that remained in Phase 2 had an asterisk and still do at the property lookup, where it says, "Subject to engineering plans and upgrades," and so on and so forth. All that seems to have been thrown out the window for a time a couple of weeks ago after this last year of the Park City Wind debacle. And it's just becoming very difficult to do business. If you want to do an upgrade to your home, if you want to buy, you want to sell, not knowing what's going on with searing is like the Board of Health has the financial sword of Damocles. And my question again is, do we have the permit? And when can this stuff be looked at as being resolved? Because you try and go and do something again and have to go through the Board of Health, even if there's an asterisk at the property lookup, they're not going to go for saying, "Oh, yeah, you're okay. You don't have to do anything to upgrade your system until the sewer line goes by." And then you've got six months to do it. So, you know, whatever. Anyway, I think you get my gist, and I don't have to belabor it any further than that. And I'd appreciate a response, and I also want to say, I agree. I'd like to hear some responses from the town council members rather than Town Manager Els or DPW Director Santos. I respect both those men, but they are employees, and we need to hear from the council. Thank you so much. Good night. I'm going to go back to the table because that's the easiest way to listen with all this technical difficulty stuff going on. Thank you. Good evening, all. Good night. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next, we have Grove Harris. Grove, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
Great. Thanks. Hi, Grove Harris from West Hyannis Port. I'm sorry I haven't been in the room and able to hear the tenor of tonight, but I wanted to bring up some thoughts on the relationship with Iberdrola and the other installation that we're going to be having for the switch station. I've learned a lot from reading about what this larger company is saying on their website, and I think it would really behoove the town to really make use of our experience here and have some kind of an educational center at what is going to be, from what I understand, a really huge new site. We are perfectly positioned to bring in the Oceanographic Institute, to do science, to link to the community college, to do educational resourcing, and to try and save other towns up and down the East Coast from some of the difficulties that we have suffered in this process with the different levels of communication and miscommunication and infomercials and disinformation and everything. So I just want to see us try and, no matter how this all goes down, to stand up into a partnership relationship and go for some transparency and use this to have an eyes-wide-open approach as we have to move forward. I've just been reading on the Iberdrola website that they're going to be taking over management of Vineyard Wind and that this substation, which is the first in the U.S. in its size, the sixth in the world in its size, 5,000 tons, and the largest capacity that Iberdrola has ever worked on. And to me, that's useful information to know of the kind of stretch that's going on here. And on the one hand, we need it, and on the other hand, it's frightening. So I just think that absolute transparency is going to be really important. And I'm just envisioning putting into the plan some kind of a place where people in a bus or cars could drive off, overview the intense industrial site that we're welcoming, that we need to have here, and look at QR codes that are on different signages that would lead them to webpages. This would not be an expensive proposition, but it would really be a one calling for transparency, education, and giving a heads up to all the other towns up and down the coast. And to, I mean, business students, everybody needs to study the complexity of what we've got going on here as we're relying on a huge private partner to do all the investing and figure out our energy needs for us. So I'd be happy to help with that in any way, shape, or form. Then just the last other small point I'd like to have is, we heard that the last time that the actual plan, in case of dire emergency, which won't happen, is if there's a fire, we let it burn. As somebody who lives on the Cape, I would just like to know that, does that mean that I, as a homeowner there, would stay in my home while it was burning? Or whether you would recommend I evacuate Cape Cod? Because in fact, the scale of what that burn would look like. Again, I'm just looking for eyes-wide-open for everybody involved. And one of the reasons for that is that we, as a nation... I'll just finish. I think you're telling me my time's up. We have to reduce our energy use, and it'd be really helpful for us all to see what increasing our demand looks like in action. So thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you. Next speaker is Christine Silva. Christine, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Christina Silva. I've lived here in Hyannis my entire life. I also work for the YMCA with the youth, running the Y Achievers program, and I've graduated from 4C, so all of my roots have been here. And I just wanted to speak my piece about the housing crisis here. You know, where a lot of people, and I know I'm not the only one, work tirelessly to try to empower our youth and have them to grow up to be successful members of our society. And it would be a real shame to put all this time and energy into these humans and make them these wonderful people and have them leave us. I really would love to see the housing situation here change. As I said, I've grown up here, and unfortunately, homelessness situation just isn't getting any better. I don't know exactly what the solution is, but I feel like forming this committee, getting the right people on, the people that have been here, who have seen the evolution of this homelessness, who have seen the passion and the drive of the people who live here that have had to leave, and who see the future in the youth that are here and the importance of keeping them here. I would love for my children to get back to the same community they grew up in, their mother grew up in. And I just hope that whenever you're making your choices and choosing who's on your committees, that you just think about the little people that it would be affecting and the families that have lived here and grown here and just want to continue to do so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Lisa Nagel. Lisa, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Lisa Nagel. I am a resident of Kootenay, registered voter in the town of Barnstable. I'm a retired nurse attorney and also, most recently, a youth service librarian and school librarian. I serve on the Barnstable Democratic Town Committee. I'm also a board member at Arinda Wildlife Land Trust, and I coordinate their Diamondback Protection Program. My comments tonight are personal. I'm not endorsed by either of those groups, but it does kind of, I think, influence my opinions about some certain things. And I wanted to, I know there's been a lot of talk about affordable housing, and I just wanted to say that I don't think land conservation is incompatible with affordable housing and development. I just think you need to be strategic, identify significant parcels that may affect water quality or health or recreation or important interests for the people that live in our community. And I think, I know that you're considering the formation of some ad hoc committees, and in particular, the committee to assess and recommend strategies for housing creation within the town. And I would like to be considered for a position on one of these committees. So if someone could reach out to me and tell me how to be considered and publicly interviewed, I would very much like to be considered for that position. I think this is a critical issue. As many, I think many people have already said tonight, we're losing a lot of young people, educators, you know, people that are, the people that support the people that live here. And I think it's a shame that we can't provide adequate housing for them. And so, again, I would like to be considered to be on this committee. I'm happy to see that a committee is being formed to address this issue. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, that's the conclusion of public comment. We're going to have council response to public comment, and then I'm going to move an item up with our two reps and our police chief after that, since they've been waiting so patiently. So, response to public comment. Who would like to respond? Nobody wants to? Council Lutke.
Absolutely. I'll respond. Thank you very much. Most of the public comment tonight was about the ad hoc committees. And I'm a huge supporter of these committees, and I think they will give us the transparency that many of the speakers tonight are looking for. I think their response, and I mentioned this the last time, there was an opportunity for some training, and every town councillor here could have gone to it. Not everyone did. And when we went to this training, it was for city forms of government. And what I saw there is we were missing that kind of echelon of command, if you will, which was the standing committees. And if you think about like the Senate and the House, you know, you have the Ways and Means Committee, the Judiciary Committee, that kind of thing. Those are standing committees with senators and congressmen. And most of our city former government here in the state have those standing committees. And this is a slightly different thing. It's an ad hoc committee. But I think it serves the same purpose. It gives the visibility. We can't, we don't have the time, I think, or the expertise to discuss everything on the dais here. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it's fair to the issue at hand. And what I've thought, I've been here probably a little more than the new people, but less than the people who've been here for a while, is I felt something was missing. I felt when we were presented with things, and one of the gentlemen talked about the sewage plan, it was the staff presenting us, and then we were meant to say yes. We were never meant to say no. And what seemed to be missing was the discussion. I didn't hear the machinations. And I think that's what a lot of people have spoken about tonight, is they felt that President Penn and Vice President Tamish did something untoward. And they didn't. And I really appreciate what you read, President Penn. I think you were working in very good faith within exactly what your position as the president allows you to do. And I didn't see anything wrong with it. Perhaps what was wrong, and it was done, perhaps, I won't speculate why it was done, but the whole release and what's happened with that, I don't think that that served a good purpose, except maybe for the purpose of the people that have spoken so well tonight and so passionately. And I appreciate that. And housing seems to be the subject of choice. There's ad hoc committees for several things, all of them, I think, valuable, and all of them will give the transparency and the level of discussion that we need to make decisions and be more than perhaps a rubber stamp up here when a staff presents something to us. It's going to give us that. And since housing is the issue... And since housing is the issue, I've been saying for a long time, it bothers me, and we're not the only community, that's let our housing production plan lapse. How did that happen? How did that happen? And, you know, that's part of the motivation for this committee. How did that happen, that something so critical that we've known about for so long, how did our housing production plan lapse? And maybe that's one of the things we can explore. And again, the folks have said, we don't have the housing. Well, then maybe we need a different way of looking at it, because perhaps what we've been doing isn't working. Our newest addition is the Hanover, the one out in back of Stop &amp; Shop. And people have said, one of our speakers spoke beautifully about the one bedroom for 2,100. I think those are about the prices out there. Well, that's what we've gotten. That was approved by the Cape Cod Commission. That was a developer. And I don't know that that met our need. And so we're looking at other ways to perhaps meet our need. And that's what these committees will do. And we've had beautiful speakers, and I'm looking right at one right here, and several of them that have asked to be on the committees. Why not? Why won't you be on the committee? And I have complete faith that our president, which is in our town rules, will select the folks. No, I'm looking at you in the green, right there, right there. No, you spoke beautifully. You've spoken here before, many times you've spoken, and it's always beautiful. And Kim, yes, you too spoke about the need for kind of calm and working towards a goal. And I think that's what we're trying to do, and I have every confidence in President Penn that that's what she wants to do, too. I normally try to speak to every speaker, but there's certainly a lot. Let me, oh, Patrick Page. Patrick Page was mentioned and his property. I happened to run into Patrick Page when I was depositing cans at a liquor store, and he was doing the same thing. And we had a nice conversation about that property. So I'm glad that was brought to the forefront again. That's a terrible situation, what Patrick Page is dealing with, and we need to pay attention to that. So thank you for bringing that up. And I think we'll have more discussion about the committees themselves when that item comes up. And then always Suzanne Conley, absolutely, and I think Grove really brought it to bear. It's scale. It's the scale of what's being done here. This isn't a gentle little thing. It's a massive industrialization. And I've always said here many times that our argument is with the state and really with the federal government for doing this to us, for putting out these massive leases in the ocean and then just saying, figure it out, you know, we'll land here, we'll land there. No, 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 there should have been a more approach at the federal level to do this in a coherent way and not do this. And Grove said, you know, maybe we could be a learning point for communities up and down the East Coast. But I would hope we'd use our voice to lobby the state of Massachusetts and the federal government to listen to us, really listen to us. And I said before, Suzanne has a beautiful video, the same issues going on in England. You know, there's a maturity to the wind farms now. We're not, maybe we're the first here, but they've been over in Europe for decades, and they've moved on to more advanced technologies of how to bring this power ashore. And shame on the federal government. I intend to do all I can to lobby at that level, for what it's worth. Who else? Again, beautiful voices, passionate voices, and I appreciate each and every one. And I think we're going to be much better for it with these ad hoc committees and have the discussions, really good discussions, in-depth discussions, that will bring all these issues to bear in a way that has to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the right? Council Clark?
Thank you very much, President Penn. And I do also thank those who came out today to speak on...
Could you pick your mic up, Lou?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I thank those who came out to speak today at public comment regarding the ad hoc advisory committees, to which some of you have addressed at public comment. I believe this proposal will provide a strategic and forensic approach to address some of our serious concerns at an elevated level, bringing councillors and residents together for problem solving. Past subcommittees, of which I have served, only have had councillors assigned in the past, and all of these meetings were and have been open to the public. So this is a more, a broader approach to bring not only councillors, but also bring residents in who care about particular topics to serve on these ad hoc committees and do some serious problem solving. For example, what Ms. Maloney had spoken to about some of our zoning references that refer to a furrier and blacksmith, among other more dated references. Maybe that's something that the committee on the town code can address to update some of those references. And regarding my constituent, Mark Wharton, and he knows that, I have addressed the concerns for the bad drainage along Route 6A with Massachusetts Department of Transportation regarding those trenches that bring polluted water to our shell fisheries. And perhaps if we address this in a little more elevated way, we can gain attention from DOT to address that drainage problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Tamish.
I would just like to echo what Council Lutke said. We do hear, there's some concerns about whether we hear the public. We certainly do. There were almost 20 people that spoke tonight. I think all of us heard, all of you. In the interest of perhaps time, or not all of us repeating what everyone else has said, you know, sometimes some of us are silent. But I think every single one of us do hear you. We may not always agree with every point of view. We certainly have our point of view. We have our constituents' point of view. But the interchange and the fact that you are here speaking is important to us, and I thank you for that.
Council Turkelson.
I appreciate everyone coming out tonight and speaking. I have to say, obviously, you all know I'm new here. I feel like some of us are being judged by some predisposed actions that we haven't even carried out yet. And I think that's a real disservice to the democratic process that we're elected to serve. When I decided to run, obviously, I had a lot of research to do. I met with somebody from Affordable Housing, and when I asked her to give, to give me a sense in relation to Cape Cod, how Barnstable does, she said, we're second to the bottom. So I just, I'm not trying to blame anybody, but this problem that we are all here to work towards and hopefully work to a better end didn't just happen when I got elected and some of the other new people got elected. It's been in the works for a while. So I think we need to kind of work together and not predispose anybody to what didn't work in the past. And we inherited some of those things, but we're all here to work towards finding a better solution. So maybe we should remain open-minded, not predispose what somebody's thinking, and look to our actions. I don't think our actions have even been judged yet, because we haven't really done much yet. And here we are fighting about ad hoc committees that could actually push the needle forward on this. So I would just like to say, you know, I took that to heart when she said, we're second to the bottom. That really made me sad, and that's part of why I ran. So I look forward to working towards solutions.
Thank you. Council Levesque.
Thank you, President Penn. This council prior to this council was working very hard on affordable housing. Council Turkelson, I don't know who you were speaking to in regards to being second from the bottom, but we have an award-winning planning department that won awards for what we're doing downtown and what we're doing in fires form-based code. We were showcased at the One Cape Conference, the Cape Cod Commission. And I'm sorry that, to say this, but you campaigned against somebody and you faulted your opponent for being the Vice President of Housing Assistance Corporation and saying that they couldn't have a, you questioned their balance of, would they be able to judge accordingly moving forward because of their position, a position that that person took to support their family? And there's only so many executive vice president jobs you can get on Cape Cod. So this is why the tenure is what it is, is because people are insulted. People are threatened. You have builders, and this is what I've discussed with President Penn when I asked if you'd share that letter with me. The discussion was, there are builders. Look, let me just say this. If you're listening right now and you're somebody who's invested in a piece of property on Main Street and you're looking to do something and use the form-based code, the zoning hasn't changed. Because these ad hoc committees could come to fruition, please don't take that as a threat and think that you can't spend money on your soft costs to do your plans and your permitting and things of that nature, because that is the fear right now in the town of Barnstable, is people can't move forward with their projects because they feel that their investments are being threatened by the idea that, and again, I choose to disagree. Nobody likes making it personal. But when both the Vice President and the President run on that, we cannot, they stated, we cannot build our way out of this housing crisis. That tells me that they don't want to see any more building, you know? And that's what citizens hear, and that's what people are talking about and about the idea that, yes, you're right, we can't completely build our way out of any housing crisis. Nobody is necessarily entitled to something. But at the same time, if we have a bank that is sitting vacant, that somebody wants to, an award-winning company that can come and we can partner with them, and just because they don't have enough supposed parking, so that we're going to, now we're going to view people who don't own cars as second-class citizens? Because I hear that all the time, that people walking to work, pick public transportation. This building, 307 Main Street, is a perfect example of that the, we're a full crowd coming against an idea of doing something different, saying that we have a parking shortage, when every third-party engineering company that comes in here says we have a surplus, but we just can't access it. And again, no more outreach was done in regards to form-based code than to President Penn. I made it my own mission to make sure the planning department reached out to President Penn to make sure that her input was put in place in regards to this. So personally, and I just, you know, the idea that an ad hoc committee would be better than this dais, that we don't have the expertise, I disagree. We do have the expertise. We have the expertise in our planning department. We have the expertise in our town manager and our staff. We have expertise on this dais. And if you don't, then come to class and learn about the expertise, about so many resources that we have to talk about things. When I was president, we, and again, this isn't a power struggle, but I put in place, when, you can laugh all you want, but this isn't a power struggle. What this is, is that we scheduled extra meetings on this dais to make sure we tackled the ADU ordinance, and we have an ADU ordinance because of that. And no, and the state's not going to put something down our throats because we did it ourselves. And so we need to continue to do this. I am worried about these task forces. I witnessed it. I disbanded the ad hoc committees that we had because they became targets in a lot of ways of, again, free thinking and ideas that, okay, maybe it didn't feel like it was representing something, but people had a voice. And then COVID happened, and I explained this the last meeting. And so, again, I don't want to keep going on and on, but the idea that we were unbalanced, that, again, we weren't unbalanced. We were finding a better balance, I thought. And this is the idea that we were reaching out to our diverse population. I mean, you know, I hear things, and these are statistics, we need to get, you know, the left hand needs to know better what the right hand is doing. I'm not saying we're doing everything perfect. But when you hear things from the school department and the outreach is that 70% of Hyannis West students live housing insecure. 70% of one elementary school, their children, talking to the people of Action, listening to their, these kids that have problems at home. It's because the quality of life and the living standards they have are below standard. Is there a way we can make it better? But somehow putting a freeze on it or saying that we're full in Hyannis, we have the infrastructure in Hyannis, we're not running out of water. You know, Dan Santos has come up here, look, could we use more water? Yes, we could always use more water. But to say that the faucets are going to run out? I mean, I'm getting people coming up to me saying, what is happening in Barnstable? Why, what's going on? Is the state still going to consider us and give us grant money because we're a gateway city? You know, all these things. People are talking about Barnstable right now in negative ways because they're concerned that we were moving in the right direction, but we're not moving in that direction currently. You know, I appreciate what Ms. Rhodes had to say in regards to, you know, you need to make $100,000, right, to afford certain amounts of rent. I will say, and again, we have to find different, we have to, there's lots of boxes we need to check. One of those boxes is the people who are making over $100,000 that are leaving here, that they don't have a place to live, and they're moving somewhere else because of that. You know, I, my son, my oldest, is graduating college on May 4th. And, thank you, that's fine, thank you. I feel really old. But the idea is that, you know, he already knew his sophomore year in high school that I am not going to be able to live here. He already knew that, because there's really no place, there's nothing for me here. And, and I, again, I have three other kids that are coming up behind him, and I think they feel the same way. One last thing. Again, we need workforce housing, we need homeownership opportunities so they can be fair wealth distribution in all our communities. And maybe that's what we can do once the sewer lines get expanded, and we can do that in the other villages. I agree, every village to participate in this. I'm, you know, there's a big piece of property in Marston's Mills, where the elementary school is, and there's conversations that are going to take place in regards to that. And I'm very excited about different opportunities of possible homeownership in that area. And it fits in a density when a sewer pipe comes down in five, six, seven years. So there's lots of different things, but I think that we can discuss it, we really can have it all, but we just need to be able to have conversations. And I appreciate the idea that, you know, maybe there's too much volatility, but at the same time, there's certain things that are worth fighting for. Thank you.
Thank you, President Penn. I just want to say, sort of the reason all this is happening tonight is because of a memo that was put out by the town council leadership and was brought to the, before, or pretended to go before the Planning and Zoning Department. And the top of that said, other than confidential, exciting news, it says, there's a change of course underway. Balance is the new strategy and priority. And the reason that was said is that we didn't see balance in our committees that we had before. A lot of people that are here tonight and speaking tonight are people who had access that they're worried their access is no longer going to be there for them in primacy to the other residents and the other people in this town. The current committee proposal that we're talking about, these ad hoc committees, seeks to do public business in a way the town code intends. That is, define committee scopes, communicate it to the council and the public to enable participation by all the same, all at the same time and in the same way, with a completed by date for the work, followed by council deliberation of any recommendations. The last several ad hoc committees departed from this required process in nearly all ways. It gave business interests earlier and more significant input opportunities than residents. This is not a point of view. It is evidenced by the facts recorded in minutes and on video of this town. The reason for sharing this committee history is to illustrate the contrast in the way that the town council had done business and the way it is now proposing to do business. The way it had done business caused hundreds of residents to petition for a residential zoning advisory committee to level the uneven playing field between business interests and residents that became institutionalized. The best substantive outcomes result from diverse points of view, which requires comparable access and opportunity for all. The town code sets out processes to achieve that end. The proposed committees are then structured in that conformance to those processes. What is being proposed tonight for these ad hoc committees is what the town code requires us to do. Okay? What the town code says that this is how you put the committees together. We've had committees, and Counselor Levesque has stated this, and he's taken credit for two committees that were sunsetted a couple of years ago. These two subcommittees, the zoning, economic development task force and the zoning regulatory Committee, the fact is that these committees and their work, composition and direct, were, and were in direct violation of Town Code. They were exposed publicly prior to their being disbanded. Okay? The former President has no choice at that point to do so, which means to say that they're disbanded. It wasn't that he came up and said, "Oh, we looked at these committees, they're not according, running according to code." It was that it was coming out in public that they were not running according to code, and they had to be shut down. Okay? What we're asking here is to have a fairness to all people involved, all, whether developers, whether the public, housing residents and everything else, to have equal access to the town and their policymaking. Okay? And that's what we're asking for tonight. And we've not adhered to those codes before, and that's what our, our counselor is doing, our Council President is doing right here tonight, is making these committees, committees to address our problems and our, and our housing problems and other problems in development according to Town Code. And that's the way it should be in this town. So, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
President Penn, can I respond to that, please?
Okay.
Thank you. I, that's not the reason why I sunsetted those committees necessarily. So, I sunsetted those committees because the, once first, it was the Home, Homeless Committee that was, that was one of the committees, the Economic Development Task Force Committee, which, you are correct, was, ran awry, so to speak, and, again, during COVID, which I explained in the last, and, and I was advised by the Town Manager at that point in time that, in his defense, that it was something that unfortunately wasn't being led properly by, again, not to throw anybody into the bus, but past leadership. And so, once that became to my attention, I did feel it was best at that point in time in protection of the people who were actually part of the committee, because their reputation was at stake, and they were being targeted by people in the public. So, again, nefarious behavior wasn't taking place, wasn't missing, or happening, rather, and, but at the same time, I think it was time, because what was happening was, those ad hoc committees actually became places where certain individuals, only certain opinions, it wasn't a balanced approach as far as public participation, and, but, again, there were errors that took place, and, but at the same time, that's not the full reason why I disbanded them. I just thought it was time to bring topics of discussion to the, to the dais. That's why I disbanded them. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, if I could just clarify, a previous statement was that I made a statement that we cannot build our way out of the housing problem, which is absolutely true. But that was in relation to, we have to do something different. We can't build our way out of it as we're currently doing. When you have a developer or builder come in and put in 200 apartments, and 20 of them are, quote, "affordable," that's not right. That's not helping us. That's making things worse, as far as I'm concerned, because those 180 other apartments that are not affordable are now calling on town services, they're calling on medical services, they're calling on the retail trades. They are contributing to the problem. So, that's what I referred to when I said we can't build our way out of it. The current way we are building is not working. And that's what I said.
Thank you, Counselor Tamish. I wanted to respond particularly to Mary Ann Barbosa and others who have expressed interest in, in participating in the committees. First of all, I want to say that these committees all are gonna be discussed and open here. Obviously, all committees shall include a period for public comment, so these committees will be posted, just like our standing committees for the town will be, and you can come and watch the committees meet. There will be public comment at every single committee, okay? So, even if you're not a member of that committee, you can comment, and you can hear everything that's happening, and you can still participate, okay? I will say that three of the committees do have registered voters as members, the other two do not, because they're just housekeeping Town Council things that don't need the public. So, one has four registered voters, one has three, and the other one has four. And there's a process for participating on the committees, okay? I actually sent a copy of this to Ms. Wallace so that she could know what it was and distribute it to people, but there will be an announcement tonight that within 15 business days, there will be an application on the Town Council webpage, okay, that will be for public participation on the three committees that will be constructed with public as, as part of the committee. So, there'll be voting members on those committees, even though, as public, you can still come to those committees and do that. So, all you have to do is fill that application out and send it into Cynthia. If you don't have the internet, that's okay, just walk up the staircase here, walk into that office there, and Cynthia will give you an application, okay? Or you could call her and say, "Could you mail me one?" Because you have time to do that, all right? So, there's plenty of ways that people can participate in this, all right? So, this is not a thing where I pick my friends, and that's how they go on. You have to apply to be on this committee, all right? Past committees didn't do that in, for Town Council.
All right, I just want to ask one question.
Yes, please. Can you come to the mic, because people in?
I don't have a problem.
What? You're not, you're not supposed to do that, but because you're interested, I'm gonna break the rules and let you do that.
Thank you, I don't have a problem. So, the committees are not formed yet.
No.
Okay, so, in the, the way I understood it for a quick hot second there.
No.
Is that they were all?
No, we're gonna be voting tonight.
Okay. Wait, 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 you're voting to go ahead with starting committees, correct?
Yeah. We're voting, tonight we're voting to establish certain advisory committees.
That, that's my understanding.
But they won't be populated tonight, they'll be populated, I will be appointing counselors to be on the committees, they're gonna do the same process that the public's gonna do. They're gonna give me their names, tell me what committees they're interested in, and they'll be appointed from that stack.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to make sure.
The public will be doing the same thing, but it's a written application.
Right. And when we fill out that application, who decides from that application what people get on that committee?
I don't know the answer to that question until we get through this motion tonight.
Okay, because that's my concern. That in the past has been what's going on. People end up picking who they want, and the people that get on that commission, there should be someone from every category, especially people who are struggling. How can people who aren't struggling and people who don't have a?
No, we heard you, we heard you loud and clear. I don't mean to shut you down, I'm just saying, we got your message loud and clear.
I get it, but I want to make sure we understand.
Thank you. Yep, we got it.
We want to, I just want to.
I got it. It's the most open process that any committee in this town's ever had so far.
Oh, okay, one last thing, one last thing. When the members are picked to be on that committee, will that be in public when we see how it's being done? Or will we be notified later who made the committee?
You'll be notified through email, I think.
See, that's what I don't like, and I don't forget it all the way.
No, she, I misunderstood. It's a public process to do that, okay? If it goes through the Appointments Committee, that's a public meeting.
But it still is behind closed doors.
No. No. It's on video, it's just like this meeting.
Oh, okay, so.
It's recorded.
Wait, we'll show all the applications, and we'll say, okay, we?
Well, you can see the discussion, you could see whatever.
Okay.
We'll get to that later.
I'm an ignorant, very ignorant person, let's just go, let's just go. No, 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 let's just go with that, I'm five years old. I'm Tom Jones, I just applied for, to get on the committee. How am I gonna know that I, Tom Jones, made it? Will I see you discussing, oh, we have Tom Jones' application? Do we vote to put him on now?
You probably have an interview, I would think.
That's fine.
How's that?
That's fine. And then after we have the interview, will we see in public, do we vote for Tom Jones to get on? Can we see that?
I think so.
I hope so. See, because our fear, and you touched on it a little.
You've never had this fear for past councils, why is that? Because they've never appointed people this way before.
Not just this, not just this, all due respect to you, not just this. Everything in our community that affects us has always been done, we learn about it after it's done, behind closed doors. And then we have to fight to get what we need.
I get it.
Okay? So, that's all.
I'm in your court.
Okay, thank you. We just want to be part of the process of picking who's who. Go ahead, Mama B.
Okay, so, I, I gave you the process for, for applying for committees, okay? The Town Councilors are gonna do the same thing. If they have interest to serve on a committee, they're gonna put the name in, in the, give the name to Cynthia and do that. I had a couple of other responses here. Megan Mort, she's not here, but I just wanted to say, she, she made a statement saying we don't need another committee and more, and more layers about housing here, but I want to say that the current Housing Committee hasn't met in almost a year, okay? So, it hasn't been meeting. So, this committee was formed, Paula Schnepp, who's our kind of resident housing person, designed this committee, described the committee, okay, and, and requested that this committee be formed to respond to all the public comment that we've heard since we've been here on the dais about housing for people who live here, real people. I'm not talking about the short-term rental people and all the market rate housing, I'm talking about workforce housing and those under that. So, that's why we're doing this. The, the committee has a year, basically, to review the policies we currently have in town, it's all written out here on the agenda if you want to read it, and, and to suggest policies for, for changing how we do housing in the town. And you'll notice along with that is a committee to assess and recommend towns' acquisition, disposition of property and development of town-owned property, because I think that, I believe, as well as many other on the council here, that the town should be proactive. Every single committee we have here is so that the town can be more proactive, okay? That's part of the change in philosophy, is to make the town more proactive and not sit back and just let somebody build all these market rate units, which, as Mr. Counselor Tamish said, just exacerbates the problem even more. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And I want to thank Mr. Brennan for coming two meetings in a row and being so vociferous about your points, because you prove what the public has known for decades, that balance is necessary and a change is due. So, thank you. Anybody else? Counsel Schnepp?
Thank you, Counsel Penn. I appreciate the public coming to Ms. Connolly. We do hear what you say, we may not always comment on a given evening about what is said in the public, but we take in, whether it's in emails or, and, and in our deliberation when there's actual items that we have to make decisions, believe me, we are taking everything into consideration. So, the public, you are free to come in and tell us anything you want. To my fellow counselors, I would like to recommend that from this point forward, to the extent possible, we work together as united council, that we're not continually speaking about the past, and now it's different, that there's a philosophy. I think we need to craft those philosophies together, and I am here to offer to work together with all, all 13 of us, and I hope we have that kind of working relationship the rest of this evening. Thank you.
Everybody all set? Response to public comment? All righty, we're gonna move on on the agenda, and like I said, we're gonna move up, we have repres, two representatives tonight visiting with us, Representative Diggs and Gyros, with a citation for our provisional police chief, Gene Chalice. Maybe you should have done this after the pledge, you could have been homeless in your jammies by now.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Thank you, Madam President, Counsel.
You're so welcome, and here she comes.
Yes. If you don't mind.
Please do.
I'm Stephen Exaros.
You want to turn around and face everybody, or no? You can move the mic if you want to turn around.
All right, and obviously, that's Representative Kip Diggs.
Yep.
We're both Barnstable residents, we're your state representatives.
Yes.
I'm a former Yarmouth police officer, and I have something to say to you and everyone out there.
Could you move the mic a little bit over to him? Thank you.
We express our deepest gratitude and commendation to all the officers and agencies involved in the recent incident on St. Francis Circle in Hyannis on Wednesday, March 6, 2024, where over 30 shots were fired at your officers. Your collective efforts and unwavering dedication to duty were instrumental in ensuring that the safety of our community and the successful resolution of the armed barricade situation. The level of professionalism, coordination, and bravery demonstrated by each member of law enforcement and emergency response teams involved was nothing short of exemplary. From the Barnstable Police Department's various units to the Cape Cod SWAT team, from the neighboring police departments to specialized units such as the Mass. State Police Bomb Squad, your collaborative approach under your leadership and decisive actions undoubtedly saved lives and prevented further harm. We want to extend our heartfelt appreciation to every individual who contributed to this operation, including the dispatchers, the patrol officers, the detectives, the tactical medics, the crisis negotiators, and support staff. The outside agencies that came to your aid were the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office, the Brewster Police, the Dennis Police, the Eastham Police, the Falmouth Police, the Harwich Police, the Mashpee Police, the Orleans Police, the Sandwich Police, the Provincetown Police, my Yarmouth Police, the Hyannis Fire Department, the Yarmouth Fire Department, the Plymouth County Sheriff's Office, the Metropolitan Boston Law Enforcement Council SWAT Team, the Massachusetts State Police Bomb Squad, the Bay Cove Human Services, the Providence Canteen, the Massachusetts Department of Fire Service, all came together in this small town to prevent a tragedy and save lives. Your selfish dedication and commitment to serving and protecting our community reflect the highest standards of law enforcement and first responder professionalism. Please convey our sincere appreciation to all members of this mission for your outstanding service and sacrifice. Your bravery, your professionalism exemplify the very best of law enforcement, public safety, and the care for others in need. We are proud to stand alongside you in service to our community. We thank you again for your exceptional efforts and commitment to keeping us all safe.
That's a lot. So, I'll keep it short and sweet. Good job to know that our officers were fired at, and they stayed calm, and they were able to be professional, as long as it took, no one was hurt, no one, no shots were fired. I think that's exemplary, and I think it's so professional, so classy, so great job, way to go Barnstable. We can all do it together, and we just showed it. Thank you.
So, this is the certificate from the House of Representatives in Boston, including Kip and myself, Senator Julian Seer, who is your senator. We are very proud, and like Kip said, over 30 shots were fired at your people. If we didn't have the heavy equipment and that SWAT-type truck, we'd be planning funerals. And no one from the police shot back, to Kip's point. It's really special, and I tell the story all over the state, I'm so proud of you. So, here you are, Chief, from all of us.
Photo time.
Chief, if you'd like to make a few comments, you're welcome.
Trying to get out of the way of the photo. So, thank you both very much for this. I'm only accepting this on behalf of the men and women that were there that day, the patrol officers that were first on scene, the SWAT operators that showed up, the officers that stayed behind and kept the station running, our civilians. that stayed behind and kept the station running, our civilian staff that was amazing that day, whether it was our dispatchers or our clinician. It was truly a team effort, and we spoke about it before, the day after the incident when Lieutenant Riley was here. It was a true demonstration of the professionalism and the discipline of everybody that was on scene that day, that nobody returned a shot. But it really is a testament to the professionalism of our agency. I'm very proud to serve alongside the men and women of our police department. I'm proud to work in law enforcement, and I'm really proud to represent the town of Barnstable. So I truly appreciate this, and I'm grateful for the recognition, but everybody that was part of that on that day deserves to be here. This is for them. So thank you very much for the recognition.
She's the best. Okay. Town Manager Communications. Oh, what? Oh, John Cox, I'm sorry. Dr. Cox. And Sheila Vaughn. Dr. Cox is from?
Cape Cod Community College. And it's great to be back in the historic home of the college way back when. Tonight, we want to impart some really good news in terms of enrollment, and we're talking about enrollment changing at a level that we have not seen in a generation with what's going on now, in part driven by Mass. Reconnect. But actually, before Mass. Reconnect was passed by the legislature, we found our enrollment was up seven and a half percent for the fall this year. Once the legislation passed, Mass. Reconnect came into play, it sort of added the jet fuel, if you will. We saw an increase of a little bit over eleven percent for the fall semester, and for this semester, we're up thirty percent, thirty percent, so. Basically, the parameters that are built into the law regarding Mass. Reconnect, it's open to students who are twenty-five years of age or older, they do not presently have a degree, and they are enrolled in at least six credit hours at the college. They also need to fill out their FAFSA form, their Federal Financial Aid Form. And the notion here behind Mass. Reconnect, it sort of, it takes the big-picture view. And when you realize that across this country, there's over thirty million people in the U.S. who went to college and they never finished. So what we're doing here with at least the initial phase of Mass. Reconnect is we're going after the older students. And when we look at who's coming in at this point in time, the average age across the entire college is twenty-six. When we look at our Mass. Reconnect student, we're up to thirty-six. So we're hitting a more seasoned student body, if you will, entering the college. As we look at the, the actual numbers and the dollars and what's going on at Cape Cod Community College, it's, the group affected in the twenty-five years of age and above, there's about nine hundred and thirty-three newer students coming in over the course of this academic year. But along the way, we're also picking up students that are a little bit younger, they're under the twenty-five mark, and we're picking up approximately five hundred and eleven new students in that category as well. So it's, it's really worked to our advantage to get the word out. I would also say this, one of the reasons it's happening is because of the educational platform that we offer. Students have choices whether they want to take their classes in person, face-to-face. They can use our HiFlex technology, which is basically a deluxe big-screen TV, if you will, with sixteen microphones built into it that can sense who's in the room, who's talking, along with the camera that zooms in on the voice. And it enables almost, it almost feels like you're there, but you're not quite. So it enables students that can't necessarily get to class to continue to take their class remotely when their schedule doesn't allow them.
Because they're in the classroom, which I think is really wonderful about our technology. When COVID hit, we went and we ebbed and we flowed unlike some other places, and I think it's really great to show what we've done. And it really has shown in the numbers in that how many students are taking online and HiFlex and in-person. And it really has shown through the Barnstable County, I don't know if you can see behind you, but our numbers in the Barnstable County obviously are pretty high. It's what I like to say, my favorite county. So we work very closely also with the high school students in our pathways program, and about seventy percent of the Barnstable High School students that applied to us actually came last year. And I think that's very important that we actually have a great rapport with all the different high schools in the area and give scholarships to those students, you know, every year if they want to do our pathways program. But we go in and we, they apply, they get accepted, we go in and do the placement testing, they're advising, we do their financial aid with them at the schools before they graduate. So we're getting really involved with that, so that's why the lower number of students, the higher number of students coming. But the financial aid aspect has been huge. Mass. Reconnect might have not, might have gotten them in the door, but we kept them there, which I think is really great, and that's a testament to my staff and to the president who've done really well. But the enrollment increases, you can see eleven percent increase over the previous year and thirty percent over the spring. But students are getting Pell as well as the Mass. Reconnect. There's a nursing scholarship as well, so there's really great options for students. And so enrollment by town, obviously Barnstable is still one of our biggest.
It is the biggest.
The biggest, and it's still my favorite. So.
My goodness.
Right? That's right. So it really is amazing, and I have to say, we have great rapport with the school councilors, but also getting out into the community. I will go to anything and everything. You have a festival, I'll come up. I'm fine, I'll get a tent. You know, and we really get involved. I know that I saw Christina tonight, Y Achievers. We are very involved in the community and getting out there. And, you know, seeing those students coming back who might have not been here for a while, we call them readmits, that is huge for us. We're seeing a lot of students who have stopped and started, and then the ones who have never gotten started. We have parents who are coming in with their kids, so it's really exciting. But over the first year of having this reconnect, it came out in August, so, you know, we're really seeing the, you know, our school really being one of the top in Massachusetts right now of the community colleges that have increased enrollments. And a college's models, obviously, having the HiFlex has been huge, our faculty, but really having our students being compared with not wanting to leave home and even tonight saying that, you know, our students want to stay home, they want to get in the workforce, they want to stay here, and we're hopefully part of that, that process of having them make a little bit more money to stay in this community and to be able to live here. So even though I was here two hours listening to this, and I'm a selectman myself in my town, it really is interesting to hear that, you know, housing and staying on the Cape, we want people to stay here, want them to work here, and hopefully our degree programs are doing that and making them be able to thrive here in the community. So we have great programs. Our top programs now are Health Sciences, Business, Nursing, and Aviation Maintenance Technology. You want to be an AMT mechanic, eighty thousand dollars coming out of the gate for a two-year degree, but really great options, and Cape Air loves us, so.
So moving forward, some of the tweaking that we're working with the legislature and trying to pull off, one is looking at potentially changing the age requirement on the Mass. Reconnect, maybe lowering it over time, if not doing away with it, so it would apply to every student coming through the door. The other piece, there's a sort of a separate version of the nursing scholarship, which is Mass. Reconnect. The only difference is there's no age requirement on that. It's geared more around the, the public health need, that we need to get more people through the nursing program, so they do not have the nursing restriction on that. The other rules still apply in terms of not having a degree. We're actually talking to members of the legislature about entertaining the possibility of changing that, so if people do have a degree and they decide they want to have a change in, in venue for life or what career they're in, they want to go to nursing school, they would become eligible because we're clear, we need the nurses, and if we can open the pathway to a few more people, we may be able to help produce those that we need to continue to serve in our community. That is our quick overview. We are gearing up for fall enrollment, so spread, spread the word on Mass. Reconnect. There's still a lot of people that don't know it, and it's, it's really a game changer. It really is.
In your packets, I did give you some information on our Mass. Reconnect and some of our information about it. If you have any questions, I could give you my card as well, and if anybody wants to reach out, we're happy to chat with them.
Thank you so much for the update.
Thank you.
Question. Counselor Schnep.
Thank you, President Penn. Thank you for a great presentation, exciting news. I'm glad a policy is really bearing fruit. That's wonderful.
So are we.
So you're serving an older population. Are you finding that your students have needs, childcare needs, that are you able to serve or connect them with those services?
Childcare continues to be an issue for our students, also for several of our faculty and staff as well, that we continue to address. We've had some initial discussions with the folks at the Y, maybe doing something cooperatively. We do have a proposal in our budget for next year that we're looking at developing a childcare lab that would be part of the Early Childhood Education Program at the college, and it would also involve bringing on another faculty member directly tied to that. But we also understand one of the biggest challenges is when it comes to childcare and the people working there, the salaries aren't a driver to stay in the field, so we definitely need to work on some, some changes to that.
Technology has been a tough thing with some of our students too, coming in, just coming into, you know, not being in school for a while, the technology piece has been tough. But we do give laptop learners, we've been doing a lot of things, but up here mentors, teaching them how to use technology, which is really wonderful. But seeing that older, those older students coming in, but they want to change career, they don't want to stay in that career, and it really is making a huge difference to understand that, but we're there to walk them through. And I like to say is, just getting in the door is the hardest part, you know? And so starting slowly, those six credits really make a difference in Mass. Reconnect to start slowly and don't, you know, it's okay to go at a slower pace, but yes. And our wellness office, I do have to say, we've done amazing things, and our president really has done a great thing about our wellness at our school. It is actually, the wellness rail is huge, and I don't know if you want to add to that, but we just got a really great grant, the Okinawa Grant, to really get our wellness going on our campus. But our food insecurity is huge. We actually have, our food pantry is used every single day by our students, and we have a huge dynamic, students that do use it. And so we are, sometimes the only meal they'll get here is on our campus, so we try to help them with that.
I think there are a number of wraparound services that we provide now that when many of us entered this field a few decades ago, we never envisioned we would be doing certain services that we, we do. Wellness is a critically important role. We've literally, we've more than quadrupled our staffing in terms of the folks that are supporting the wellness initiatives on campus, and it's paid off. It's enabled students to, to get through some tough struggles and to continue on with their enrollment, so it does pay off in terms of the completion. So it's been an asset. I would just, one sidebar that I just heard about today is that we participate in a, actually an international competition in aviation maintenance technology. It's going to be in Chicago in April. This year, we are sponsoring our first all-female team of AMT technicians. So, and that's, for the field, that's a big deal, so.
It's one of our most diverse fields.
Yeah, it is, actually.
Counselor Crowe.
I just want to thank you for what you're doing. It's really heartening to me to see people coming back to school after having some experience, and those are motivated people. So I'm sure they make great students, and you're doing them a good, good service to move up in their careers. And I've seen a lot of people go by the wayside that don't graduate from college or from, from school, and then they, they don't reach their potential. So this is wonderful, and I'm glad you're doing that, and it's, it's good to see here in Barnstable.
Can I just add that, like, we do do credit for prior learning as well, so students have prior learning from experience, we do that. But also, it's important for students to know that, like, you know, we have the EMTs if they want to go do paramedic or things like that, so definitely getting into the field with that. Sorry.
I bet you work on admissions, right?
Get as much information out as you can while you can. Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, President Penn, and thank you very much for your presentation. I'm proud that the college is in, not only in our town, but in my village. I have a question, this lovely presentation you have, can we have it be available? Thank you very much. And is that deadline on, in your paperwork, in your PowerPoint?
For the admissions?
Yes. Oh, I thought you said April something.
So April 16. April 16 is when the fall semester opens to register for classes. We've been taking applications since November, the application is open, and we're happy to take any student that wants to come. You just have to graduate from high school, so come on in, we'll be happy to take you. I like to say if you're breathing, I'll talk to you, so come on in and we'll chat. Thank you.
And we're hiring faculty.
Hiring faculty?
Full-time faculty as well as part-time adjuncts, yes.
Good to know. Excellent. Any other questions? Counselor Turkelson.
As far as the nursing program, how many students are currently, like, each year, how many students are in the class for, like, a matriculating class?
Yeah, so every, every other year, we do an evening cohort that is a little bit larger. So this year, every, every even year, we do an evening that has about forty, but we're adding more, which is great, we're adding more to the, to the cohorts. And then every year, we do a day option, which is, has been at seventy-two but moving to like around eighty. And then we have an LPN, yeah, and then we have an LPN to RN program, which if you're already an LPN, you can get your RN and you do a year program with us. We have three different programs for nursing. It's about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty students, depending on the year, and the cohort overall. But nursing is a huge need. Cape Cod Hospital has talked to us quite a few times. Students are getting jobs right out of the gate, and actually, our NCLEX pass rate is in the upper nineties, I just found out today with the new NCLEX rate, so we are really getting our nurses right in the field, so.
In the limitation on that program, what do you see as a limitation for expanding that program? Just having faculty to train them and educate them or space or?
Space is definitely an issue, and we did, in 2018, we doubled our footprint in cooperation with a partnership with Cape Cod Healthcare.
Please speak into the mic, okay? Just for, thanks.
If, if you have the chance to come over and take a look, you'll notice the similarities between our Teaching and Learning Lab and what you see at the hospital. 2018, we doubled the, the footprint. We began to increase the, the enrollment. When COVID hit, enrollment applications took a hit. Where we are now, we are due to increase another cohort of nursing students for the fall, that would be eight students. And then when we get to 2025, the fall would be for the evening this year, 2025, we would do another eight during the day. So we're, we're putting together a pathway to build that enrollment, and we are pretty much connected at the hip with the folks at Cape Cod Healthcare.
And I'd just say, for the legislature, if you want to talk to them about ending the, having a degree would be a huge dynamic for us, because I think the cost of education right now for nursing, if you already have a degree, you may not be able to get financial aid, so that would be amazing if they could get that free nursing scholarship. I think it's a game changer for anybody that wants to go back to school. If you wanted, you know, if you're in a field and you want to go back, I think you should be able to go back at a low or no cost. So I think talking to legislators about that and having that pass through would be really important.
Good for you. Yeah?
You got that one.
Plant the seeds. Any other comments and questions?
Well, remember, you're always welcome to come on over. We're glad to show you what we have there. We have the new Science and Engineering Building, which houses the toilet of the future, and if you don't know what that is, come on out and we can show it to you.
Good for you. Thank you so much for coming and for the presentation.
Thanks.
And for being so patient. Okay. We have Town Manager Communications, which were pre-recorded. I do want to remind people this announcement has been made before, that if you're interested in representing the town on the, be our delegate on the Cape Cod Commission, that letter of intent from you needs to be in by April 5th, and just give that either to the Town Manager or to Town Council, Town Council staff. We're heavily into the Budget Action Calendar. Commission on Clean, these are just high- Commission on Clean, these are just highlights. Commission on Clean Energy Infrastructure Sighting and Permitting, that's a mouthful, which, still trying for a seat on that. Seeing that we already have a lot of clean energy infrastructure in town, it would be nice to be included at the table. Vineyard Wind Cable Landing Monitoring and Signs, a program to do that is in progress. Cape Cod and Island's Water Protection Fund, they had a new vote on their executive committee so that we could have the 25% principal subsidy level that we thought was forever and obviously isn't. And we probably need to have another Private Roads Workshop because we did have one at the last meeting. And there's lots of work still to do on that. And there was an update in there. Somebody asked who, if they're still watching, from, I think it was Mr. Kite, maybe? No, Kirk, sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Kirk. Asked about Public Works and Water Resource Management Planning, and Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan in Seneville and what's happening where and why. And her presentation in PowerPoint that she did was very informative and kind of addressed as part of that. So, I think that's, I know that that's online and that would be good. What did I miss? Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Counselor Star.
I think Mr. Kirk was asking about a watershed permit.
Oh, yeah.
DEP. Do we, do we?
Good point.
Can you answer?
Do we have an answer for that? It was a heck of a question.
Good evening. Mark Els, Town Manager. Yes, that was a very good question. And the answer is that the application was submitted. Public Works is in continuous discussion and it's still under review by the Department of Environmental Protection. So, I'll ask Director Santos to, and he may know the answer tonight, but I'll ask him for my next update, to have a discussion with DEP about what their timeline is. We have asked that question, regularly briefed, and I have not heard that they've given us a timeline for their review of that application. The other thing, and it was somewhat built into the caller during public, during public comment, I would encourage everybody not to assume anything that's going to come out of this application and permitting process. It's first time. It's been done in Massachusetts. Though we have assumptions how it might come out, we do not know what DEP will do relevant to this permitting process. Not unlike the Siting and Regulation Commission that was created for offshore wind. You know, we were the first out of the gate on this in the state of Massachusetts. And we offered to be the case study, to learn from, to better for the Commonwealth, how this issue is being addressed of the modifications to Title V. That did not occur. So, we offered this to the state of Massachusetts. So, DPW will report out and we will share as best we can with any and all communities and certainly with you all as this progresses. So, but don't make, there was a question about, well, if we get the permit, then we can answer the question about whether there's going to be requirement, for example, of nitrogen reduction of onsite systems throughout the community. We don't know the answer to that. That will depend on what DEP does. The regulations are broad enough that there could be different answers to that questions depending on what they do.
Oh, joy. Thank you. Any other, yes, Counselor Schnapp.
Thank you, President Penn. And thank you, Mark. Just to kind of follow up, but on a very specific CWMP issue, we're getting close to our first hookups of our CWPM expansion. And Kelly gave a great overview presentation and my fellow counselors, if you haven't had a chance, you know, it's very informational. I'm just wondering, what is the coordination between DPW notifying residents of project closeout and the Health Department notifying for sewer connection? Are those simultaneous or is there a span of time in between those two activities?
They are coordinated and Director Santos is in the back row. So, if he has a moment and can come up, I think he could probably give you more detail. Thank you.
Hi, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. So, yes, we've been working closely with the Health Division, Tom McKean primarily and his staff. And so, once a project is complete, then we notify the Health Department, Health Division, about all of the properties that are on that particular project, that they can be connected to sewer. And so, that triggers their system to then send out a letter saying they have six months to connect and all the process that goes along with that. We've also developed a handbook that will be distributed, both a short version and a longer version, that gives all this information out to homeowners that are going to have to be connected. And then, the submission of the completion of the project also goes to the finance folks because we have to send out a letter about the sewer assessment. And so, these things have all been worked on over the last several months. We've had, we had a meeting today, in fact, on this, where we're coordinating these efforts. We're going to go through a pilot program. We're going to be using the town's permitting system to keep track of things. So, we're not, we don't have a new database or we're not reinventing the wheel. We're going to use the existing system that people are comfortable and familiar with. So, I'm confident it's going to be as smooth as can be with a new process. And we're, as you mentioned, the first connections are probably going to be, I mean, about six to eight weeks from now. We've still got a couple of things we're cleaning up, but that should go as expected.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Santos while I say? Oh, no, go right ahead.
No, I had a question for Mr., I just might.
Counselor Star, yeah.
If I might, while I have Director Santos here, with your permission, within my report in the, in the update on our, you know, proceeding with our fiscal budget, we talk about the fee hearings and we talk about setting of fees, but for the fiscal year, but there's a significant programmatic change that's occurring that I didn't note in here. And while I have Director Santos at the podium, I'd just like him to share for a moment with our public, because about a third of our residents buy stickers to go to the transfer station. But we've had a major change in the way that we are going to sticker people. So, if you could indulge while he's here, I would very much appreciate that. Thank you.
So, we're eliminating the sticker, is really. It doesn't mean we're eliminating the fee. It's just that we're going to have a plate reader system, which has been installed, it's been funded, and it's going through testing right now. And so, we pick up license plates and so, there's no need for a sticker any longer. The folks that are at the gatehouse, they get notified when a plate doesn't read that it's a paid member. And then we go out and speak to them. And sometimes it can be an error, it couldn't read the plate properly. This has been used in a number of Cape Cod communities, so the bugs have been worked out of it. It's highly regarded in those communities, working really well. They don't have a lot of errors, but it's able to be more efficient and effective than we were, just with our eyes. And if we get, if you get distracted, then cars go by or you're talking to someone, so there's a lot of sticker issues that this will eliminate. It also saves money because there's no sticker. And it saves a lot of staff time because we don't have to mail all these things out, which was taking a lot of time to mail out and process 9,000 stickers. Now, it's a very simple process and more and more done online. So, we're excited about it. And so, that's, we're going to let our customers know through means like this, but also through direct connecting with them.
Thank you. Psych, easy pass.
Right.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much. Speaking of the transfer station, what's the update on the swap shop?
You should stay up there, Dan. Yeah, I got a question.
Well, I can't announce the grand opening yet, but it's going to be open in the next, probably within the next month. We're going to announce the times and dates and we're going to try to, we're going to have a slow start because, as you may recall, the previous iteration was all volunteers and a lot of them haven't been willing to continue. But I think once we get it going and people start using it, we're going to encourage people to volunteer and hopefully, we'll get some people to help us out. But we're bringing in a, one of these metal boxes. Basically, we're getting rid of the building that's there. It's just, it's no longer useful. And they have doors on the side rather than at the end, so it's going to be a kind of a prefab swap shop. And things that are worth keeping beyond the day, then we'll store them in there and people can shop. And so, we're going to give it another try.
Follow-up, please. So, if people wanted to volunteer, how would they do that?
Well, they could contact my office or just speak to Tracy Regazio or the administrative assistants at the office at Solid Waste. And they'll be happy to take their name and we'll get back to them when we start looking at including volunteers.
Counselor Star.
When do I need my new, my new, not sticker? My new not sticker? When is my old sticker? Not going to be any good, I guess.
July 1st.
July 1st, okay. Thank you. So, I had another question about the signage on COVLE speech and was hoping that somehow we could say something positive about renewable energy and some of the benefits of Vineyard Wind. I know, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want, you know, a billboard down there, but...
Well, what I'll do is when I, I've seen it not, I have seen it on a computer screen not sent to me yet. I met with Nate Mayo. I've been meeting with him from Vineyard Wind on a regular basis. So, as soon as I get a cut of it, because they're looking to have, we're looking to have this in place by May 1st. Also with a QR code, so people can, like, just get real-time information on safety and compliance concerns. But I'll send it to you. That's, sorry to be long-winded. I'll send it to you so you can take a look at it and you can tell me what you think. All right? It's, I've seen it though, and it's appealing, it'll be appropriate and informative. So, I don't know how much more, maybe we need another QR code to achieve what you're talking about? And I think we can do that. Those are pretty simple. And people like them. More and more people seem to be using that. Thank you.
Yeah, for those of you who are wondering what we're talking about, Mr. Camberary came to a public comment probably several months ago and suggested this plan. And so, it's being implemented.
Yeah, I'm going to have Tom take a look at it too when it comes in. We've been, we've been talking about it as it's progressed.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions, comments for Town Manager? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the minutes. We did a motion in a second to accept the minutes unless there's anybody who has any changes or amendments to them. And we have a motion.
Second.
In a second. All in favor of accepting the minutes as presented?
Aye.
We have an abstention because you weren't here. Okay. One abstention, other than that, unanimous. Communications from elected officials, boards, committee, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Feel like there should be a drum roll. Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, President Penn. On behalf of the Appointments Committee, which has been meeting about twice a month so we can populate the committees that we have, the next meeting will be on March 29th, where we will vote on the candidates that have been interviewed for the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Infrastructure and Energy Committee. I'm also announcing at this time that it was decided at the last meeting that interviews or applications are still being accepted for the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, but will close on March 29th at our next meeting. Also, we'll be accepting applications for the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Appeals Committee, and that will close also the same day.
Question for you on that, excuse me. Are there restrictions on where people live to be members of that committee or no?
I have to take a look again at the, at the Appeals Committee.
I think you either have to own property or live in the village.
Right. There is a prescription there.
Yeah.
And different representatives for different functions, like an architect. We're also doing interviews for Human Services. I know Asia Graves is one of those who applied. And the Disability Commission, which has openings. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the report. Counselor Levesque.
Thank you, President Penn. Just want to announce on Saturday, March 23rd, this coming Saturday, rain or shine? And it is supposed to rain. So, come dressed appropriately. At 10:00 a.m., there will be an Easter egg hunt for the Marston's Mills Village Association at Burgess Park. And that's 559 Route 149, Marston's Mills. And please park at the Burgess Park parking lot and not on the street. Very busy state road and people coming around that corner, especially for the safety of your children, please use the parking lot. The Easter Bunny will be there for photos with your child. And there's two separate areas. There's three- to six-year-olds will be in the fenced area and seven- to 10-year-olds only in the field. So, just keep that in mind. It's basically for children 10 and under. So, again, just want to, it's always a fun time and it always seems to rain. So, again, please come dressed accordingly. And then, again, that's this coming Saturday, March 23rd, rain or shine, 10:00 a.m., Burgess Park. Thank you.
Anybody else? I have a couple. We had our first water workshop on Leap Day. I call it 2/29. And our next one is coming up on April 11th. And it's going to be the same time, 6:00 p.m. The topic of this one is PFAS, which as we know is everywhere and something to discuss. It's going to be the same setup as the first one was, where the public will not be here. You can watch it live on television or stream as you, as you watch meetings at any time. And you are certainly welcome to ask any questions and submit your questions to us up till noon time the day before. So, up till April 10th at noon. If you're later, we'll take them. Okay? We prefer not to have comments and opinions. We would just like to have questions if you could. So, whatever comments you want to make, make it in a form of a question and we'll ask them for you. We've got a pretty in-depth, I think, presentation draft that we discussed recently, including Silent Spring. And we want to have the water districts with us again from every village. And who else do we have in there? I don't know. I'm drawing a blank right now. But there's going to be four or five. It's not just going to be DPW here with a slideshow. Okay, we've got several speakers that will be coming in and addressing, yeah, county, the airport, all kinds of partners on this. So, that's April 11th. And this Saturday, a little competition for the Easter egg hunt is, one day only, the Rotary Club of Hyannis Home Garden and Lifestyle Style Show. They're doing something new this year. They've been at the high school forever and a day. And originally, that started 60-something years ago across the street at the Armory, actually, when the Armory was actually the Armory. And I remember somebody was selling, they had dryers and the new thing for washing machine was perma press cycle. And all the women were around the perma press washing machine and they had a pair of pants in there. They kept taking out of the washer and putting it in the dryer and showing how they came out and they didn't have to iron. I mean, that was pretty big, you know, back then. But they've progressed a lot since then. So, good news this year is it's free admission and it's at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center. But it's one day only. Okay? So, that's the report from downtown Hyannis. Anybody else? I know I'm too old. I know I'm too old. Counselor Schnapp.
Thank you, President Penn. I just wanted to remind everyone that the month of April will be outreach meetings to our villages with the LCPC, our Local Council of Planning Committee. I don't have the dates for those, but just to be aware of that.
Yeah, they're posted on the, on the website, so easy to find. Okay, we set with communications? Counsel Neri.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to bring forward, and I'll forward this to the communications staff, as well as Cindy Level, to put out to the councilors and hopefully get out to the public. It looks like the NSTAR, on February 23rd, they've just, 23rd, right? They've just released the, kind of the questions and answers regarding the, that were presented before the EFSP board. It has a lot to do with things like dielectric oils and things like that, so I will push this along. It just came out, and I'll push it along, and hopefully, we can get it up online and have some comments on, let's call it the factual aspects of what's going on, on the substations.
Thank you.
Make sure I get that out.
Okay, so we're going to proceed to our business of the day. Under Old Business, item number 2024-166. Counselor Neri.
With pleasure, Madam President. Let's see here. I'll probably read the bullet points as well. This is old business. It may be acted upon with a majority vote. It's item number 2024-166, and it is a resolve establishing certain ad hoc advisory committees. And I'm just going to read the bullet points. Committee to review Town Council rules and the Town Code. Committee to review the purpose, composition, functionality, and effectiveness of the standing committees of the town. Committee to review and assess zoning, and review the town's use of regulatory agreements. Committee to assess and recommend strategies for the housing creation within the town. And finally, a committee to recommend policy with respect to the town's acquisition and disposition of property, and development of town-owned property, as it's written.
Second. Motion in a second. Attorney Novak.
Thank you, President Penn. Good evening, councilors. Karen Novak, Town Attorney. So, as we've discussed, I think, quite a bit tonight, under the Town Code, the council establishes ad hoc committees, and under the Town Council rules, the council president appoints the members of those committees. The ad hoc committees are limited to a particular subject area, and they serve only in that capacity for a specific period of time. They're not standing committees of the town. I think that's basically it, in terms of, you know, we had requirements in here that the ad hoc committee will be subject to and comply with the open meeting law. The committee member, the committee meetings will include a public comment period, and committee chairs shall provide regular reports to the council at Town Council meetings. My recommendation is that you would take separate votes on each of the committees, discuss each one separately, and take a vote on each one. I can give you the language for the motion that would allow you to do that. Before you do that, if you're looking to do that, I know Counselor Neri had a motion that he wanted to make, and his should probably come first. So, thank you.
If I may, Madam President? This motion would be in regards to, basically, the last three committee compositions, should they, should they be voted on the affirmative. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the provisions of Town Council Rule 11A, as it relates to the appointment of registered voters by the Town Council President to the ad hoc committees set forth in this item, in order that such appointments shall be made by the vote of the Town Council after recommendations from the Appointments Committee.
Is there a second to his motion?
Second.
Counsel Burdick second that. Discussion. Nobody has anything to say? Come on. No, you introduce. We'll go here. Counsel Lucky. Does he want to give his rationale? Yeah, go right ahead.
Yes, and thank you. Thank you, Counsel Lucky. This motion, by its nature, would have any applicants in the town who apply as residents of the town on any of the committees that involve residents of the town. Those applications would go through the normal process that we've already have, already have established, of going before the Appointments Committee, and those five members of the Appointments Committee would make recommendations, vet those, those residents of the town, and bring them before the Town Council to be ratified. So it's, it's pretty simple. It's basically taking whatever, folks in town, apply for the different boards, those last three boards, go in front of the Appointments Committee. Our Appointments Committee can make a recommendation to the council, and they can be ratified. I hope that helps. Does that understand?
And your reasoning for that? The need for this?
It's a simple one, I think. We have an appointments process in place in the town, and I think that, from a, frankly, a management point of view, I feel that it can place the leadership of our town, kind of paint them, paint, paint the person into a corner on, on, on this particular item. I know it's been kind of contentious out here in the public, and I think that it will have some separation, and obviously, visibility. And our, I have very good faith in our Appointments Committee and their decisions, and I think it can be spread amongst that committee, and therefore, not be targeted to just one decision-maker in that, in that aspect. I think it, I think it makes sense. I think it's reasonable. And I know there's been some conversation about delaying the process of bringing these folks forward. I think, I'm sure Madam President will set a date where the, like, the final date when people will apply for these, again, should they be voted in. We're still talking, this is prior to our vote, right? But should that occur, we can put it right over to the Appointments Committee at their next meeting. They can review these, these potential applicants, and make a decision, and it will be a broad-based decision, and bring, bring the best, the best people forward, which I'm, you know, I'm very, I'm positive that our Appointments Committee can, can, can do that. I hope that helps.
Counsel Lucky.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to present an alternate position on this. I don't agree with the amendment, and as part of the amendment, you said you wanted to suspend the rules. And I think the rules are clearly in place. In fact, one of the ad hoc committees is to look at the rules, and the rules say that the president makes the appointments, and this has never been challenged prior to this. And I think President Penn deserves to have this, this rule stay in place, and to make the appointments. She's boldly come forward with these ad hoc committees. There's been an enormous amount of discussion on this, very passionate discussion, and I think it would be a disservice to the president to take that, that honor and that right away from her. I think we owe that support to the president to allow her to complete this. I echo your support of the Appointments Committee. They have an established role, and they do that well, and that's not being challenged. If the Rules Committee wants to change the role of the president in this ad hoc committee, then that could be the place to discuss this. I don't believe that President Penn has done anything wrong. I don't believe that we're censuring her. I don't believe that it's, there's trust problems here. So I don't see a need to change the rules at this juncture, when she's worked so hard to put these ad hoc committees together, and I trust the judgment of this. And I think it, it degrades the council as it exists. And again, I don't know that this has ever been done to another president, and why are we doing it now? I think it's unfair.
Counsel Starr.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have to disagree with Ms. Lucky. I think that the perception, we need, we need to work on our perception to the public, and having one person make all those decisions isn't a good perception. So, that's, thank you.
Counsel Evec.
Thank you, President Penn. You know, I think that it's a checks and balances type of thing, and maybe, you know, maybe there is a mistrust. I think that you heard it today, a distrust. I think that, you know, and again, there's nothing wrong with having a strong opinion about what's happening in the town, the zoning, but it was clear, you know, in, in that, in that memo even, that we, you know, the, the Zoning and Regulatory Committee was going to be created to fix the downtown zoning, and make the certain things happen, and things of that nature. And, and if that was the belief, again, you know, again, I don't even agree with the ad hoc committee, quite honestly, but if, if it's going to pass, let's just go back, you know, I can just reference the Town Manager's report, right here. Town Manager's report says that now the Cape Cod Commission representative is going to, after consultation with the Town Council President, the Town Manager is encouraging residents to a register. This has never happened before. This has always been the Town Manager's decision, just to pick somebody and put them on that, on that, in that position. And I don't, you know, I didn't ask the question, per se, but it definitely lingers in my mind, is why are we changing that? And what's the...
Did you want to know why?
Sure.
Because that's what the Cape Cod Commission legislation determines. We were not working according to, to the plan before. We were working outside of that.
Oh.
So they sent us a letter, and they said what the process was, and that's the process. And Town Manager has asked that, that appointment and others go through this office and, and come here, okay?
So, so what is the process? When you say that, so who's going to be...
Same as all appointments.
So it's going through the Appointments Committee?
No. It's going, it's, the Town Manager just doesn't do it by himself. He does it exactly the way it's listed there, as per Cape Cod Commission determination.
So who's going to help him make that decision, then, on the appointment? Once the applications are in, who makes that? Is he still going to make the decision by himself?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So he's going to continue to make that decision by himself?
He's just making it public, to know that there's an opening.
Okay.
And that the opportunity's there.
Okay, it was my understanding...
Versus just, just reappointing somebody out of the clear blue sky.
I'm sorry, it was just my understanding that he was going to have help picking the candidate this year, that's all. So, and as far as I know, that's okay. But, you know, again, what it, what it, well, the point I was trying to make is that it's good, I mean, we have people on the Appointments Committee, when I watch the Appointments Committee meetings, that we have people on advisory committees currently that are being asked to come back for an interview, to be reviewed by the Appointments Committee, even though they've served on a board committee or commission for a number of time, in an advisory role. And that's honestly never been done before, but we're bringing them back here, and there's councilors who believe that. So letting, again, just the president make unilateral decisions on all the appointments, and I understand that's what it says in the code, but I would be in favor of, of what Counsel Neri is saying, just for, you know, again, in the spirit of transparency.
Counsel Neri.
Counsel Lucky, I wholeheartedly agree about code, and the issues with some of the code that's, that's on our books. But I think that we would be disingenuous to believe that the, what I'm trying to get around here is really the optic of what's going on now, right? I'm trying to quell this, this tension, maybe? I don't know the right word to use here. And I think that this can be done in a fashion, and I, you know, I spoke to Council President, we could have three applicants, and it doesn't really make a difference if there's, depending on how many, if this goes through, then we pick the three, right? But we could have 30 as well. So if there's 30, I just feel that we have a, an Appointments Committee already established. It's in effect. You task them with it. They decide. The number, the names come up. It just, it's, it's, it's a way to remove this optic that we've been looking at and listening to for a bit now, and I think it's a perfect opportunity. And then we can revisit, certainly, with, if we, if we go forward with the, the Town Council, the Town Council Code Committee, this is a perfect example. It's a perfect example, in my opinion, but thank you.
Counsel Bloom, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, President Penn. Mr. Neri is, Counselor Neri is always a reasonable man. Maybe his, the guys he plays hockey with don't think he is, but I've, I've known him to be a reasonable man. I'm just concerned about the, the Appointments Committee has, has a full schedule, and I'm not sure how long it's going to take to get to these folks. And I'm, I don't know when the closing date would be, because if the closing date is going to be, you know, within the next three weeks, I don't think we have any time to meet on these people. But I also want to tell you, President Penn, that I have complete, you know, faith in, in your choices.
Thank you. Perhaps somebody would want to, perhaps Counselor Neri would amend so that the Appointments Committee would have a special meeting for this, and as quickly as possible, because to delay three of some of the most important committees we have legislated here would be discouraging.
With that said, we'd probably have to determine, again, this still has to be voted on, so we're kind of, this is the horse before the cart here a little bit, but we'd have to determine, like, a date, you know, a date, sure, when applications, the last day of the application date, and then obviously, we'd have to look and see what the, what are the, what are the Appointments Committee meeting, what, what...
We've been meeting every two weeks.
Every two weeks? Is it Tuesdays, Wednesdays?
Fridays.
Fridays? Every, every other Friday? And what is the, let's say, the last date of application? Did I see it on here? Was it, was it the 28th or something? Did I read that?
No, that was the original, because when it was at the March 7th meeting, that was not updated for this. It's the same language. So I mentioned before in public comment that there would be 15 days for the public to apply.
Okay.
And that brings us to April 19th. So if the Appointments Committee could meet the last week of April, and dispense with the appointments, that would be terrific. Or let's just say before May 1st.
So with that said, I'm not sure it's in my purview to determine when, when the Appointments can be reached, but maybe the, the vice chair could have...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you could, you could vote the motion as made, because it doesn't, it doesn't specify when, when the committee will meet, and then I think you could separately talk with the Chair of the Appointments Committee.
Yeah, that's not tight enough to vote on. That's kind of willy-nilly.
I, I don't know that the council could actually set the meeting schedule for the committee. I think the committee would have to do that.
No, we could just give them a deadline. They could set their own schedule before the deadline.
Well, maybe you could amend this to say, by, by recommendation from the Appointments Committee, right, by a certain date, and then have them figure out how to meet that.
Counsel Schnapp.
Thank you, President Penn. I think this conversation sort of is an example of some of the logistical issues that we're facing with creating five committees at once. I think that that is actually a pretty big menu to, to take on, but we can talk about that as we move through the committees. But it also raises the question about the resident or citizen participation, which I am fully agreement that we need that participation for the topics that we're talking about, but whether these committees should have that membership. And I say that for those of you who did attend the MMA training, and were impressed with the standing committees that many city council governments had, those were city councilors that were exclusively on those committees. And, and there's a reason, because those are the... Because those are the elected officials. Those are the ones responsible for bringing forth possible changes and ordinances, legislation. And it's difficult to select among all of our citizens the two or three or four that would actually have that input. So, that's, you know, I'm just throwing that out there as we move through this conversation.
I think you can only talk to the amendment that's on the floor right now.
The amendment, I didn't hear what the amendment was.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the amendment is.
I don't think there was an amendment on the floor.
It was...
Well, your motion.
His motion was the amendment.
Okay, okay.
This is an amendment to the full... So, the one thing I would add to this amendment that Counsel Neary is making is can we amend it so that we can... You know, usually the Appointments Committee requires two readings. So, if you wanted to abbreviate the process in which that selection is made, do we need to make that amendment now? Or can we make that in the future if it's necessary?
I think you could suspend the rule for a second read at the Council meeting.
At that meeting?
Which is what we've typically done.
Any other discussion? Counsel Turkelson.
Thank you, President Penn. I think what's most kind of in my decision-making or listening to everybody is how, on one hand, we have half of the time people are saying that the new people want change and we don't want change. And we want to keep it how it is. And we're trying to change. And then, on the other hand, now we're saying that we want change in this area. So, it's just kind of confusing how much we're arguing for the old and want the new and holding on to the... It's just, it's really kind of circular conversation. So, it's, I'm appreciative of the conversation in recognizing how complicated it is. But it just seems interesting to me.
Counsel Crowe.
I won't be supporting this amendment. And I think the powers enumerated into the President are done by the code. And I've discussed this earlier about how we've gotten away from the code, the town code, and we need to stick by that.
It's actually the Town Council rules on this issue.
The Town Council rules. And I think we should stick to the rules that have been in place and been... Other Presidents have used these same rules over the last number of years. And I don't think changing now for a particular reason, I don't understand what the reason is. I understand what Paul Neary is saying, Counsel Neary, Counselor Neary is saying about the optics of this, okay? But in my opinion, a lot of these optics have been created over the last two weeks without people knowing the full story. And it's been ginned up in certain respects, is my, in my own opinion. I think we should stick by the Town Council rules that every other Town Council President has done in the past. And I don't think we should be setting any precedents, depending who's sitting in that position. So, that's my opinion.
All right, Counsel Schnapp.
I just wanted to add that if we went forward with this amendment, it would retain the President's ability to pick all of the councillor members and if there's ancillary members from other committees. So, we're not removing a lot of what is in the Town Council rules. We're just recognizing sort of the larger feelings in the public sphere that there might be some diversity of opinion on the selection of residents might be a good idea.
Any other comments? Counsel Tamish.
I think Counsel Schnapp, for me, hit the nail on the head there that in this particular case, the President retains the powers. But because of, as Counsel Crowe said, the controversy has been generated over the last two weeks that with the public appointees, that I think the transparency will be helpful.
Okay, so are we ready to vote on Counsel Neary's motion? Do you want to repeat it one more time so everybody knows what a yes vote does?
My pleasure, ma'am. The motion is to suspend, sorry. The motion to suspend the provisions of Town Council Rule 11A as it relates to the appointment of registered voters by the Town Council President to the ad hoc committees set forth in this item, in order that such appointments shall be made by vote of the Town Council after recommendation from the Appointments Committee.
Would you consider just putting the date of May 1st in there at the end?
That seems like a long way away, right?
No.
It's not a long way away?
Is May 1st for applications?
No, no, no.
The process will be done?
For their decisions.
Okay.
For their recommendations.
Would you like to make a motion to amend his motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add the words "by May 1st", meaning that the recommendations of the Appointments Committee would be done by May 1st. You seconded the motion, the amendment?
That's very funny.
Okay, do we want any discussion on the amendment? We have to vote...
So, the vote is on whether to amend Counselor Neary's motion?
Right, by adding the words...
That's the first vote.
Right.
And can I just clarify that? Is their recommendation back to the Council by May 1st? It wouldn't be on an agenda until after that. Because we have a meeting on May, right beginning of the month.
I don't know.
May 2nd?
Well, it'll get on the agenda whenever it can get on after the recommendation.
Okay.
Whenever it happens.
That's what Counsel Schnapp is asking.
The last date is, and they...
Right.
It seems like a long way out. I think it could, in effect, be done sooner. But May 2nd should give you plenty of time, I would think.
Yeah.
But we're in March.
I think we're good. I think we're okay.
Okay, so you're voting on whether to amend Counselor Neary's motion by adding that date?
Yes. All in favor of the amendment to amend his motion, raise your hand. It appears anybody opposed? Counsel Berdick's opposed? Anybody abstaining? No. Okay.
So, now you would vote on the motion as amended?
As amended. All in favor of the motion as amended? One, two, three, four, five, six. All opposed. How many hands is that?
Six.
Six and six.
Doesn't pass.
Motion fails.
Okay, so I have another motion to recommend.
You want to play again?
Why not? So, I'm recommending that you, someone, make a motion to take separate votes on each of the five committees, set forth an item 2024166, and assign separate consecutive letters to each such vote, beginning with 2024166A.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's moved by Counseler Berdick and seconded by Counselor Clark. Discussion. Okay, Counsel Turkelson.
And the goal of this being that we could split out maybe two of the committees and vote on those now and leave the other three behind for another time?
Well, the vote is so that you could take separate votes on each committee so that you're not taking one vote to approve all five.
And the separate votes being we could say we'd like President Penn to have full control of this and not full control of the other ones? Is that...
No, you just said no to that.
Okay.
It's, it would be separate votes on whether a committee exists or not, if it gets populated or not.
This is to create the committee? Sorry.
Yeah, and Counsel Schnapp, if I may, she brought up a good point saying, you know, there's a lot of, it takes a lot of bodies to populate these committees. If there aren't enough people that apply for them, then they don't exist. I mean, that's what happens, you know? So, if no councils apply for a certain committee and nobody's interested in serving, then there's no committee. I mean, it's just the way it goes, all right? No interest, no go, okay? All right, so we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded that, to vote on each one of these one at a time, correct?
Correct, and we'll give each a...
And that each one will have like 2024166A, B, C, D, that kind of thing. So, we need to vote on this right now. All in favor of voting one at a time, raise your hand. Opposed? One. Anybody abstain? Everybody voted? Okay.
So, then, as a matter of procedure, I would just have you make a motion to approve the first committee as A. And then there'd be a second, and then you would discuss.
Yeah. Somebody want to make that motion? Counsel Tamish.
I make a motion that the... I make a motion that the A, what we refer to as A, the Committee to Review the Town Council Rules or Regulation and the Town Code, be approved.
Second. Any discussion? Counsel Schnapp.
Thank you, President Penn. Again, this is a more general question, but I'll try to make it specific to this committee. What is the expectation? I know that these are going to be open meetings with public comment. What is the expectation for the logistics for these committees in terms of, are they going to be hybrid meetings? Are they going to be taped live? Are they going to be just videotaped? I just want to make sure I understand, you know, what the expectation of these committees are.
Well, I think each committee is going to pick a meeting time. Each committee is going to have staff support by Town Council Administration, okay? I have had that discussion with her. So, she's going to be taking minutes. And she will be putting out the notices and posting the meetings, et cetera. Each committee can decide on their own if they're going to do hybrid, if they're going to do Zoom, or if they're going to meet in person, as long as that they're advertised and people know how to participate. And that's fine. Anything I missed?
Will they all be videotaped?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll all be videotaped. And will they have a separate website so that minutes and agendas can be posted?
A separate website? Probably not.
There have been questions raised by members of the public that previous committees did not have sufficient publicly posted minutes and agendas on the town's website.
Well, they would have either on the Town Council web page, since these are all Town Council and not standing committees of the town, okay? They will probably be minutes posted there or even in the calendar on the listing where it says, you know, when the agendas go out, et cetera, et cetera. And when there's a listing on something, they could be posted there also. But my guess would be, is each committee going to have a separate page? No. It'll be under the Town Council umbrella page.
The expectation for our previous ad hoc committees was each subcommittee would have its own page. It would have updated minutes and agendas. It was searchable. And that's the only reason I'm just kind of putting this out there in the front, that we want to meet the public's expectations that these are public, transparent, open. And do we have the infrastructure to, day one, make sure that happens? So, just, I just want to put that out there.
I think we're all set. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Counsel Star.
So, from what I understand, we can only use this room and the Selectmen's Room next door? There are only two rooms we can meet in?
Maybe.
Well, it's the only, if we're going to videotape it, is that right?
And your question is?
Scheduling. I don't know.
You will work with your admin assistant to schedule. There's plenty of times on Mondays. There's lots of time on Fridays. There's lots of time in between that people can meet.
Okay.
I've looked at the schedule. It looks to me like there's lots of times that rooms... I've booked meetings here many times. I've never had a conflict. Yet.
During the day?
Some.
Because I think a number of councilors have commitments during the day. And so, it would be difficult to schedule...
You know, maybe they're at noon time. Maybe they take an hour at noon time. And so, you can eat your lunch and be in Zoom from work. I mean, that's up to each committee to solve the problem. I can't tell you how to do this. Just make it work.
Okay.
If you don't want to be on a committee because you're working full-time, then don't apply. If you're not flexible enough. Counsel Leveque.
I just think that the challenge that we have if we're meeting at noon time, and again, learning from past experience and the mistakes that have been brought out and trying to do it right, if this is what the Council chooses to do, it really, all the meetings should really take place after the workday. I remember getting, you know, complaints a lot of the times in regards to zoning and regulatory. Sometimes it was taking place at 4:00 or, you know, even 5:00. And people were complaining that they couldn't get there in time to watch. And so...
Now, but what we're discussing here is a Committee to Review Town Council Rules and Town Code, and it's only populated by Town Councilors.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to reiterate that if this discussion continues, I thought this was more of a general discussion in regards to how these were going to function. But I just think it's important that we just make these times available for the public.
Any other discussion for this particular committee? I think every council that's here, if you've read the rules and if you've read the code, know that they don't agree. Even down to the level where the word councillor is spelled different ways in different places. And it's time that those kind of changes be looked at and made. And perhaps it would even be suggestions based on discussion here tonight about who gets appointed by whom in the rules and regulations going forward, so we don't have to painfully go through this again. So, that's what this committee is going to be looking at. Are we done with discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the establishment and of the committee 2024166A, Committee to Review Town Council Rules and Town Code, raise your hand. Anybody opposed? No. Ananimos. Counsel Schnapp, did you vote? I'm sorry, you were writing. Okay, thank you. Okay, next is 2024166B, Committee to Review the Purpose, Composition, Functionality, Effectiveness of the Standing Committees of the Town. Is there a motion and a second? So moved. Okay, Counsel Clark moved it, and Counsel Crowe made a second. Attorney Nober, did you want to say anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions about this committee? Which is 2024166B. Counsel Star.
Thank you. Would this committee reorganize committees or look at the need for new committees? Doesn't, is that covered in here, I guess? Or is that part of it?
Yeah, they're looking to see the effectiveness of current committees, whether there's a current need for the committees. But they could also make recommendations while they're doing their research and once they get into the weeds about, gee, the scope of this committee is XYZ, but they're really doing this work over here, so we need to change the scope. Or, you know, if that's valid, or change whatever, or create a new committee or whatever. I don't know that we have 40-some-odd committees. I don't know we really look to make new ones. But if, you know, some of them might morph into different things. I mean, it's up to the committee to make those decisions, recommendations, bring them back to the Council. We can discuss the possibilities and try to figure it out. Counsel Turkelson, you had a comment?
Thank you, President Penn. I think what I was going to say is the point of this committee would be always to bring it back to the Council to make a vote.
All of them?
Yeah.
Every single committee has to report back to the Council.
So, if this committee said we want to get rid of this committee, modify it or change it, we're all here to say yes, no, or otherwise.
Exactly. Figure out the reasoning. What did you discover? What input from the members you might have gotten or staff? You know, whatever you're looking at, exactly. Any other questions, comments? All right, so we're... All right, so we're going to vote on 2024-166B, Committee to Review the Purpose, Composition, Functionality, and Effectiveness of the Standing Committees of the Town. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? No. Good. Unanimous. Nice. Those were the easy ones. All of those just consisted of town counselors. So 2024166C, Committee to Review and Assess Zoning and Review the Town's Use of Regulatory Agreements. This is the first committee that also includes registered voters, four registered, up to four registered voters of the town. Can we make a motion in a second?
Second.
Counsel Crowe made a motion, and Counsel Clark made a second. Okay, discussion. We've had lots already, but is there more? Counsel Star.
My first view of this is that it's too broad. That it, I mean, are we looking back at ADUs? Are we looking at home-based businesses? Are we looking at SDR, short-term rentals? Are we looking at form-based code? Are we looking at family zoning, single-family zoning? So I don't think a committee can handle all of that. So, I mean, it's
I think the committee picks and chooses what they wish to handle and what order.
It seems like form-based zoning is the issue that's on the table.
Not necessarily.
And I think, my thought is that we should take that out and deal with it here on the dais.
Why wouldn't you want a committee to do some legwork and bring it back for the council to discuss?
We've already passed it. We are, a lot of us
You passed it after 15 amendments.
We're all familiar with it.
No, we're not.
Well, we could, we could all, I mean, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't have a committee. We should have Elizabeth Jenkins come in and explain it to us. Yeah, so, I mean, if you say people don't understand
I just don't understand what you're afraid of. Nobody's going to take away the zoning that was passed here.
I'm worried about, you know, I mean, we talked about
It's a review.
Yeah, but why don't we do it here and do it sooner?
You will do it here. After the committee does their work, it'll come to the council, and you can do whatever you want with it.
Yeah, but we're talking about November. Okay, October 31st is, so it's a long ways away. So why, I don't know, I just think we could do it here. Thank you.
We don't have the time to do it here. It's committee work. Counsel Schnapp.
Thank you, President Penn. I agree with Counsel Star that this is a big endeavor to look backwards at our zoning, that changes that seven of the sitting counselors passed. Seven of us on this dais passed it. Many of the amendments were crafted, you know, with your assistance. Thank you. And as was said by a number of people during public comment, the uncertainty of looking at zoning that was recently passed is, has an effect on potential development, or, you know, things that are happening that we would like to see happen in town.
My guess is that if it's in the pipeline now, it's grandfathered.
President Penn, I'm speaking, please. But I'm not sure what the purpose is of going back and reassessing recently adopted zoning changes. Any zoning changes are going to require nine votes of the council. I'm not even sure we have nine votes, when we, you know, we've had issues in the past where we've had to have recusals. So I'm wondering, you know, if we're really going to make much progress, especially in the form-based code in the Hyannis Business District. I'm also a little bit concerned about how the review of the town's use of regulatory agreements would proceed. I have been a, I would say, a critic of regulatory agreements in their past usage, and have raised the question on whether regulatory agreements are necessary going forward, now that we have form-based code and we have very, you know, specific zoning that is out there. So I'm not sure if the review of the town's use of regulatory agreements is to look at past regulatory agreements and kind of, you know, examine those, or if it's to look at conceptually about regulatory agreements. So, again, I think this particular committee just raises a lot of questions for me. And I'm not sure, again, whether this should be a function exclusively of the council to look at, and maybe with the assistance of the planning board, or whether there's a value to bringing in four, up to four registered voters.
President Penn, may I?
Sure.
Thank you. The reference to the use of regulatory agreements was put in there on a going-forward basis as to what would be the appropriate use of regulatory agreements, and how does the town wish to use them. So it was not a look back. It was really, I mean, that might inform the look forward, but it was really a look forward as to how, how do we want to use that?
I think the wording is a little ambivalent, because it's review of the town's use, and use could have been past or future, so it's
We can certainly tighten it up, but that was, that was the intent of that language.
Right. And truthfully, I would approve that piece, that narrow focus. I think that's a very appropriate thing for us to look at. But I'm concerned, at this point in time, reopening and looking at our recently approved zoning changes at this time.
Any other discussion? Counsel Avak.
I would, I think, I agree with Counsel Star and Counsel Schnapp, and again, not to repeat what was already said, but the idea that, you know, doing this, it really puts a cooling on projects in the works. I think that a lot of hard work went into that, into the form-based code specifically. Again, a lot of outreach, and even, like I said, those 15 amendments, kind of in the 11th hour, brought to, you know, being brought to the table by Counsel Clark in regards to that, and really hashing it out, if I remember correctly, really hashing it out with Counsel Mendez to kind of come to an agreement, working together with you, and trying to, you know, come to an agreement that's something that would be, you know, supported by the entire council. And I believe working those 15 amendments was, worked towards making all 10 councils, who could vote, vote in favor of it. So I think that was actually a pretty good, transparent work together to try to get something really, that's something that was, that was rung through the process, you know, and really worked hard on, and I don't understand why, why that needs to be, doesn't, that doesn't mean it was flawed. Those 15 amendments made it better.
Exactly.
So it's good.
And if it's really good, then it'll stay the way it is. And if it needs more improvement, then maybe it does. Maybe it shouldn't have been 15 amendments. Maybe there should have been 25. How do you know?
Well, there were amendments that didn't pass, and I just don't want it to be something where we're going back, trying to find, you know, and again, trying to win the contest. You know, we came to a good compromise. That's a win, as a community, working together to try to come to a compromise. And maybe if, I don't want it to be, I don't think it should be, and I think that's a bad look to try to move something forward, because you didn't get a large enough pound of flesh out of a, out of a process, a zoning change process, that has really been embraced, and again, going back to, you know, how hard the planning department worked to get that through, and the outreach that was done for, over a two-year process in the midst of COVID, outreach, you know, working diligently with residents to try to get things passed, and bringing somebody like Kate Maldonado on here to work that through, and Jim Comfort, and, anyway, I just, I think it would almost be an insult to our planning department to bring something back like that, and the council that voted for that. So I would not be in favor of this committee. As it stands, though, I do understand, and if we wanted to narrow it down, regulatory committee enforcement is something that's definitely a concern of mine, because it is so hard, and again, you know, from plantings to, you know, landscaping, architecture, things of that nature, other things, or whatever it might be, or exactly how it looks on the inside, or bike racks, or whatever it might be, there have been areas of controversy as far as regulatory agreements go in the past, that makes sure that those get enforced, but that doesn't seem to be what's in front of us now. But I would be in favor of something like that.
Counsel, Attorney Nober.
Thank you. The original language was enforcement, and I had recommended changing it, because I really don't see that, I see it as a very legitimate issue, and I talked with Director Jenkins about it, and she agrees, but I don't think it's a council issue. I think it's, staff needs to figure out how to deal with those issues and address it, and it is a very real issue, but I don't think it's one for the council. Thank you.
It's always been a a good thing to do, to go back and look at your work, to make sure you got it right the first time, and there's nothing wrong with critical thinking about what happens. Once you see something applied, you say, oh gee, I wish XYZ had happened. And that's all this is, is a constructive review. It doesn't say anything about, it doesn't even single form-based code out. I don't know where everybody's getting off that, you know, form-based code's going to go away. It doesn't even say that. So everybody's inferring what they're inferring. Counsel Lutke.
Yes, just to make a comment on this. I was here and did vote for it, and then what happened is, I was the liaison to the Main Street Historic Commission, now Counsel of Bloomis, and so I watched, you know, up close and in person what happened with 307 Main. And we've seen the angst in the last couple of meetings here with people, and I saw it there, and that's when I thought that something wasn't quite right, because there shouldn't be this angst. We've put this form-based code on a historic district. And this isn't my idea, this is another individual I got this from, that we've basically said, you have to tear something down to comply with the form-based code, and we've put that right on top of an historic district. And it doesn't, it's not working as it is, and that's where I think it needs a second look. It does need a second look. It was, I think, a bold idea, a good idea, but it, whenever you do something initially, there's going to be that point where you question it. So I think this would be wise to look at that, having watched that, that the developer came back three times, and I was kind of stalled, I think, on 307 Main. That shouldn't be. Then we didn't get it quite right, because it should have come back once, and it didn't. So there's something amiss. I don't know what it is, but I think this committee could search that out. That's just one aspect. I like the broad nature of this, because that's what you do then in the committee, and you, especially with the citizens, then you come to a consensus, yeah, let's look at these three things. Maybe form-based is one, maybe they decided on this committee, no, that isn't one. But I really like this one, and clearly what we voted on isn't working because of the experience we've seen with our regulatory committee, the Main Street Historic. Something's amiss. It should be looked at.
Counsel Tamish.
Earlier tonight, one of the public speakers mentioned that the current zoning, you know, talks about wheel rights and tinkers and what have you, and, you know, she got a laugh on it, but I'm not familiar enough, I'll be the first to admit, with all the ins and outs of zoning, to know whether that's true or not. She touted Mashpee's zoning that seemed to be up hip and up to date and whatever. So I'm looking at this as not only a review of what was recently passed, but I think we need to look at all of the zoning. And, you know, the council as a whole cannot do that. It needs to be a subcommittee to look at the zoning and come back and say to the council, hey, this works, this doesn't work. We should change this, you know, we've got to bring this up here. And that's what I hope that this committee would accomplish.
Counsel Avak.
From a historic perspective, Vice President Tamish, the zoning and regulatory committee that was initially started in 2017, 18, was actually just doing that, to try to bring and educate, and because it was such a broad topic of zoning and regulatory and things that were inconsistent, and I think that's what, because I've, you know, had conversations with Ally Mahoney in the past, and I know where she's coming from in regards to this. In fact, she was the chair of the Economic Development Task Force, and did a fabulous job leading that charge, and before it got a little bit derailed. But the, again, no fault to her or anybody on that committee, but I think what she's getting at is, it does need to be updated. And so if that's what we're looking to bring back, is that type of zoning and regulatory committee to review all zoning, but also understanding that that was such a huge task, and then we had to bring, you know, at first, we were, okay, that was, it was too big. Let's bring the B District and the HB District to try to get more permissible uses, so that it didn't have to come before the zoning board of appeals, just for a change of use, because it's a thousand-square-foot space, and to get an architectural design and get a land use attorney to come before the zoning, it's a thousand-square-foot space that you have to spend $5,000 to try to get your business started, when you can just go to Mashpee. I think that's kind of what she was kind of talking about there, and I do remember examples of those types of things happening. And, you know, a barber shop being put in the Centerville Shopping Plaza, or whatever it might be, that happened after we kind of aligned and gave more foreuse right through that process in the HB District and the B District. But I don't think that's what we're talking about here. I think this is very specific, that we're looking at recent zoning. Again, I'm sorry to keep going back to that memo, but it was discussed that specifically, we were going to talk about form-based code, enforced floor retail on the east side of Main Street. It's, so it's, again, what are we actually talking about? Because it is, it is, it's broad, it's not broad. We're talking about regulatory agreements. I just think there's a lot of different things that are being discussed, and what this is actually going to accomplish. And as far as the Hyannis Historic, I think a lot of that Okay, I think a lot of that, we're going to have an echo now. Awesome. Hello, hello. Okay. Should I stop talking then? President Penn, should we stop?
Yeah. We'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Test.
I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning. I was so excited. I appreciate you giving us time. That was stunning.
...plan that, yes, it's not passed yet, but it does exist with some ideas. And the state housing bond bill. And then bringing in some expertise from, in this case, CFAC, the Housing Committee, and the Planning Board. I'm not sure what the addition of the citizen input would bring to this, even though there have been a lot of eager people. And, you know, I think that would be great. Again, I have some discomfort that all the decision-making and the committee's composition will reside with one person. So I'm feeling a little ambivalence on the committee that I recommended. But I do know that it -- there's a lot of value for us to prioritize this issue, and I probably will support it.
Thank you. Follow-up? President Penn, please.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Schnepp. Another suggestion I would have, because it got brought up very plainly, that we have a housing committee that serves an advisory role. And we do have some really key members of that. You know, and it's top of my head, the chairperson, Hilda Haye. You know, I think that, you know, there are some people there. I think they've had some quorum issues. We don't have a housing coordinator. Would it be beneficial, maybe, that those -- the resources of the people who are applying, maybe they don't understand that we actually have a housing committee that could be talking about these things? And it just -- to have one housing committee that we've had for a number of years just kind of languished there, but we're going to prioritize a new committee with counselors and some other -- that, I don't know. I just think that we have a housing committee. Why aren't we trying to focus on finding members for that and activating that? Why are we starting something new? Thank you.
Counsel Levesque. I've had a discussion with the head of Planning and Development, who staffs the housing committee. And they're perfectly aware of some of the issues that you already mentioned. And what this committee can do is enhance while they're reorganizing. They haven't met in almost a year. Okay? It's been a very long time. And frankly, I think the town council needs to be more proactive in trying to set some policies and to hear the conversations and to do it. And then it'll be referred to us to go to Planning and Development and move on. We can't just sit here and wait until they get a housing this and a housing that. It's too important not to discuss. So that committee is not productive right now. So I don't know about you, but when I see something that's not productive right now, and we have an opportunity to be productive and be proactive, time after time we hear how important housing is, that this is that time.
Excuse me, President Penn. We're having some difficulty with the live feed. We're wondering if we could take a few minutes' break to see if we can get that resolved.
Okay. Kenny Collin versus Zoom?
No.
Oh, it's Channel 18. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So this is being recorded right now, but it's not going out live right now, so.
Now you are. Now you are.
Oh, we are?
It's been a heck of a night. So please belay my last. We're good to go.
Okay. Are we good?
Is Counsel Mendez still there?
There was probably a five-minute period.
He's there. Did she say we were good or we needed a break?
No, we're good.
We're good. Okay. Thank you. So is there other discussion? Kind of lost our place here. Counsel Schnepp brings up some valid points. You know, if a committee can get through, if they decide that they're going to do work on these two things or these three things, or they really want to see what a policy works for this or this, or something that doesn't already exist in town, then that's what they work on. They don't have to work on the whole scope. They work on what they can handle, and they make recommendations to town council. And we discuss it. We adopt. We don't adopt. And maybe they continue working on more after that. So you just bite it off in little chunks. Make it work. No other discussion on housing creation, committee creation? Counsel Neary?
Again, I'm just the optic. This is the particularly sticky optic, this one, so. I wouldn't wish it on my worst enemy, I'm telling you.
Okay, I guess we're -- Counsel Mendez, do you have any comments about the housing committee?
I'm sorry, President Penn. I only -- I got kicked out of the room and had to come back in, so I can't even in good faith vote for it or not, because I only had half the conversation.
So you can abstain when the roll call gets called, if that's your choice to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So on item 2024-166D, Committee to Assess and Recommend Strategies for Housing Creation Within the Town. Roll call, please.
Counselors Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
No.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Abstain.
Neary.
No.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes. Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. So now we have item 2024-166E, Committee to Recommend Policy With Respect to the Town's Acquisition, Disposition of Property and Development of Town-owned Property. Discussion? Oh, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second? Anybody? Here she is.
Second.
Crowe and Clark team on that. Counsel Schnepp.
Yes. Could I ask for a rationale on this item?
The rationale on this item was that, in the spirit of proactivity, the town has lots of property that it owns and could dispose of, could develop, could use in many ways that it hasn't been doing recently. Recently, the purpose of the town owning property was restricted to our well-protection districts and to just protect that. And there are -- there's a force who think -- who would like to see the town more proactive and especially for small neighborhood-size-scale affordable housing, workforce housing, et cetera, that we might have properties already that would be good places to do those, you know, with four units, six units, eight units, that kind of scale thing. So that's what this is. It's kind of a -- the ability to look and see what's out there and what opportunities might exist, depending on what zone the properties are in. Maybe there's other needs that the town might have as far as recreational needs or something else that's out there that we could proactively provide for the community. I don't know what the outcome will be. It's just a recommendation for, you know, how can we get this from a different angle?
If I could add to that?
Yeah, please.
I think it's less about individual properties and more about sort of the thousand-foot view of what are the council's priorities in terms of communicating that to the town manager as to acquiring property, disposing property? What are the things -- what are the factors that he should be keeping in mind and what is the ultimate goal? So I think, as President Penn mentioned, you know, the town manager has previously said that his direction was not to acquire property and to dispose of property we didn't need. And if that's changing, then that's direction he would get from the council.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Levesque.
Thank you, President Penn. Just from a historic point of view, a lot of what happened in regards to that kind of being the strategy, and I believe that was a big task that President Raffi Kassetti took over in her three years of being president, was that we owned a lot of property and we didn't really even know what we owned necessarily was what I was told, and that we needed to evaluate what that was, what the -- what we're using. I will say, my three years as president, it was probably one of my biggest disappointments is the fact that we do own a lot of property, and it was very difficult to manage. And it's a lot to ask of our asset management department. Again, no knock on them. I'm not saying that. There's a lot of things that happened there, along with our clean energy creation and different things that, you know, working with the Cape Light Compact, there's a lot of responsibilities, licensing. And so to -- that's kind of what was happening there. And working towards not, you know, putting property back in the tax rolls. Am I gonna -- do you need to add something or?
When you're talking.
Okay, thank you. And so I think that that's a little bit of history there. It was a lot to manage, and there was a lot of procurement of property back maybe, you know, 20, 15 years ago. I do think that there is some concern when you speak about, and I know you've had discussions with me when I was president, and you, you know, I met with you, and we talked about that type of clustering of, you know, affordable housing. I'm just curious to know, is that going to be a discussion about creating an additional department within the town of Barnstable that we're going to hire project managers and construction workers and things of that nature? Or we're going to partner with certain -- okay, the appropriate partners, so to speak, in regards to -- so I was just curious, maybe, who those partners might be as part of this discussion? Or also, too, somebody brought up to me the idea of the disposition of the airport, and was that something that would be considered under this committee?
I don't think so. But maybe. It depends on who's on the committee and what they want to talk about and what their goals are, I would assume. But it's possible. I would think if you -- if somebody's going to talk about disposition of the airport, that, you know, that needs -- there needs to be a huge study about that. That's not a committee work thing unless they want to be involved in that study.
Okay.
Which is a possibility, that they'd come to us and make that request. And we do the say yea and nay, but I think that that would be an internal staff function for the town.
Okay. Thank you.
From the council.
Thank you for answering that. Thank you.
And if I could just add, with the exception of the airport, the use of the town property is under the purview of the town manager. So to me, this is really policy setting. This is really, what does the council care about? What are your priorities? What are the -- what are you looking for him to do? Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. More discussion. Counsel Starr.
Maybe Mr. Levesque can help me. Remember the Jenkins Bog? That was a 91A? And the town manager never came to us to ask whether -- it came up for sale, I guess, right? Is that how to say it? It -- we were first ones. We could have.
We had a right of refusal.
The town had a right of refusal on the property.
Thank you. So that's just an example. Hopefully, he heard us then.
And actually, I'm supposed to be putting together a policy on that, so I'll take the hit on that.
Go ahead. You want to be on this committee?
Counsel Schnepp.
This is an example, this committee, where I really think it should be a counselor-only committee. I think what we're saying is it's, you know, what does the council want to recommend? And I think this is a counselor responsibility to look at this. Not getting public input, but I think it's the counselors who should be, you know, deliberating and making recommendations back to the full council, so.
Counsel Turkelson.
Thank you, President Penn. Along the same lines, in listening to the discussion, if it really is to drive policy, it seems like something that wouldn't need resident input if it's, you know -- I agree with Paula. I think that's what she's saying.
Would you like to make an amendment?
I'd like this committee would be composed of five counselors only.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Discussion on the amendment. No discussion? Counsel Starr.
I would go with three.
Three what?
Three counselors. I'm getting construction fatigue here.
I've had advice by our legal department that three's too little because of quorum issues.
Yeah. If you have three, then the quorum's two, and then you're going to have problems every time people talk to each other.
Okay. Thank you.
That's why we have five.
Yep.
I started with three, believe it or not. Live and learn. Counsel Lucky.
I like the idea of having the registered voters on this. I think there could be some creative use. I had a meeting with Brian Florence today. One of the big issues is, and I think it's probably in all of our precincts, is with the home occupations and a lot of the large vehicles associated with some of those home occupations. One of the things that I brought up, and I'm not saying Brian supported it or he was agnostic on it, was, you know, maybe the town could step forward and we could have a lot where people could, you know, park these vehicles to get some of the stress out of the neighborhoods. So I just think there's some, maybe some creative ways to look at some of our land use that we haven't looked at before. And we have bought an enormous amount of land, mostly for our water protection. But it would be nice to look out there and see if there's things that we can do to help our residents at the lowest level, you know, those that are trying to have their home businesses, things like that. There could be, again, you know, some creative ideas that come out of the community. So I would support keeping the registered voters here.
Counsel Turkelson.
Thank you, President Penn. In no way, if we were to remove the four registered voters, that residents that want to come and make public comment and provide input could still do that. So it's not like these committees wouldn't be open to the public to gain that access that I agree with, your concept of what comes out of our residents and their creative thinking. They can still come and make public comment.
Discussion on the amendment? To my left? Nope. Counsel Mendez, do you have anything you want to discuss on the amendment?
Yes. Yes, thank you, President Penn. I actually agree with Counsel Turkelson. I think that, you know, obviously, the public doesn't have a problem coming in and commenting on things. And I also believe that, you know, councils are elected to make these decisions with the input of their constituents. And, you know, the way that the divisiveness over things have been in town the last couple months over different issues, I believe it's a better recourse for constituents to know that their counselors are making these decisions, of course, with their input. I don't want it to be a thing where people are second-guessing decisions because they don't agree with a fellow citizen.
Thank you for that.
That's all.
Any other discussion? We're ready to vote on the amendment. So the amendment is to eliminate, this is probably not your same words, but the registered voters as being committee members for committee number -- item number 2024-166E. Roll call, vote on the amendment.
Correct. Counselors. Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
No.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
I'm going to abstain.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Woo-hoo. Okay. Item number 2024-166E. As amended, the Committee to Recommend Policy With Respect to Town's Acquisition, Disposition of Property and Development of Town-owned Property. Minus four registered voters.
Counselors. Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
No.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. Phew.
All right. Sorry.
Thank you for that exercise. New business. Item number 2024-167. Counsel Burdick.
Thank you. This is an item of new business that may be acted upon by a majority vote. Acceptance of a gift of a used ping-pong table to support the Hyannis Youth and Community Center.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Good evening.
Good evening.
You're a trooper.
Yeah, it was the first time I've been working for the town almost 10 years, and I was the first one on the agenda for a new item, and I went, "Yes!"
Yes.
No! But you guys do it most Thursdays.
Oh, my God.
But behind you, there's a slide that shows that, as most of you know, we have a rec center or a game center within the Hyannis Youth and Community Center that's used by our membership, our youth, user groups, our internal schools-out after-school resource program. And this is just a way to accept the gift. Saves us about $1,500 and expedites the delivery. And just so you know, I was a little apprehensive of taking some, "Oh, I got a picnic table." The ones we have are beat up. So I said, "Oh, send me a picture and some measurements," not knowing what I was going to see. As you can see, the one behind you, it's like this commercial-grade, heavy-duty picnic table. So I won't belabor the point, but thank you for your time. Any questions?
Does it come with paddles?
It does. Paddles and -- paddles and it has the directions and the warranty and everything, so yes.
And it's even got wheels, so when you have to fold it up and move it, you're in good shape.
For the 65th Rotary this Saturday.
Oh, there you go. Good for you. All right. Are there any other questions? We do need a roll call vote because Counsel Mendez is remote.
Counselors. Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Woo-hoo. Okay. Item number 2024-168. Kristen.
This is item number 2024-168, an item of new business. Refer to a second reading on 4/4 of 24. Appointment to a board, committee, or commission.
Counsel, Counsel Penn?
Yes.
If you need a second. I'd like to move that we suspend the rules about bringing it to a second reading and vote tonight so we can populate the CFAC committee, because they're doing important work that's timely.
Okay. So is there a second to her motion?
Second.
Yes. Lots of them. Any discussion on her motion? So that means that we'll be voting not to move this, then we'll be voting on his appointment this evening. There will not be two readings. Yes. Okay. So we need to vote on the amendment, right?
To suspend the rule.
I mean, to suspend the rules. Yes, thank you.
Okey-dokey. Forgot to change the page. One sec. Okay. Mendez.
Yes.
Thank you. Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Okay. So now we need a -- is there any discussion or questions anybody has on this individual or the appointment? No? Okay. Counsel Turkelson.
I just want to say that if anyone had time to watch Mr. Keen's interview, seems very qualified, and we're excited to have him if we vote that way tonight.
Thank you. Okay. So let's have a roll call vote.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Item number 2024-169. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, President Penn. This is new business, may be acted upon with a majority vote. Item number 2024-169, a resolve approving a letter regarding the veteran tax work-off program.
Attorney Nobert?
I need a second.
Oh, a second. We have seconds all around.
Thank you, President Penn. Last October, Governor Healey signed into law Chapter 50 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, amended Section 5K of Chapter 59 of the General Laws to increase the amount a person in a senior tax work-off program can earn each calendar year from $1,500 to $2,000. The amount they earn is used to reduce their property taxes by that amount. A similar provision in Section 5N of Chapter 59 for veterans was not amended and remains at $1,500. So you are being asked to approve a letter to our state senator, copying the governor and other elected officials, to request that they make the same legislative change for the veteran tax work-off program. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments, discussion? Pretty self-evident. Yes.
Just one quick question. It's addressed to Senator Seer with a copy to Representative Diggs and Exaros. So does it have to originate in the Senate? I mean, they'll be getting copies, but should they be addressed directly?
The reason I sent it to Senator Seer is I believe he had been having conversations, correspondence with Counselor Clark.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So all those in favor of item number 2024, oop, I'm on the wrong page, hold on a minute. 169, we have roll call.
Okay. Counselors. Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Item number 2024-170. Counselor Tamish, please.
Item number 2024-170, is new business, may be acted upon with a majority vote. Order to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth to enact special legislation exempting the position of police chief in the town of Barnstable from the civil service law.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Attorney Nobert.
Thank you, President Penn. In 1937, town meeting voted to accept General Laws Chapter 31, Section 49, as to its chief of police for the purpose of bringing the chief of police under civil service. The town is now seeking to remove the chief of police position from civil service. The way to remove a position or a department from civil service is generally the same way the department or position got in. So you get out the way you got in. However, under state law, under Chapter 4, Section 4B, if a municipality is seeking to revoke its acceptance of a law, and that's what we would be doing, and that municipality has undergone a change in charter, which we have in 1989 when we moved to a city form of government, then the way to remove the chief position is to follow the same procedure that would need to be followed today to put the position under civil service. So under state law, there is a clear procedure for placing a police chief in a city under civil service. And that process is initiated by a petition of the voters to place such question on the official ballot, and then it's voted on at a regular municipal election. Alternatively, a police chief may be placed under civil service by special act of the legislature, and that's what we're looking to do, and that's the vote that's before you. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments? Counselor Neary.
Thank you, Madam President. Just as a question, should this be voted on in the affirmative? Is there a time? How long does that take, that process? Is it?
That's an excellent question. There have been numerous bills filed with the legislature to remove positions or departments from civil service. I think it would be a tougher road to hoe, I guess is the phrase, if we were trying to remove the department, and that is a conversation we'll probably have somewhere down the road here. To remove a single position and the chief position, I think we have a better shot at getting that, but it's really anyone's guess how long that might take. I couldn't tell you. I did notice that there was a recent, there was a recent bill where they did approve, and I forget which town it was, where they removed a police chief. I have been told that that process took a year, but I don't know the ins and outs of that.
Maybe we'll get lucky. Any other questions, comments? All right. Shall we take the roll call on item number 2024-170?
Counselors. Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you.
Next. Item number 2024-171. Counselor Schnapp.
Thank you, President Penn. This is an item of new business. This is the first reading, and it's a referral to a second reading on April 4, 2024. Item number 2024-171, order authorizing an intermunicipal agreement among the towns of Barnstable, Yarmouth and Sandwich for the purposes of establishing a regional emergency communications center hosted by and located within the town of Barnstable, as written.
It's the second on the floor. Questions, comments? There's pretty good information here that we've seen. No? Nothing to say? Okay. So to refer to a second reading?
So this is going to require us building a new building in the town of Barnstable?
Let's refer to a second reading.
Yes. Can I ask questions? No.
Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager. Yes, that's correct. It will be. This is, this will facilitate, and I don't want to get too much into it, us accepted a grant that we actually applied for and were awarded last year for Phase 1 of design, and then we'll move on to Phase 2 of design, and then fully grant-funded a new building that would be a regional center for the three towns, a joint dispatch. So you're looking at three to five years by the time this is all said and done.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah. So, thank you, Assistant Manager Clyburn. All right. So we are voting to refer to second hearing. Item number 2024-171. Second reading. I knew that. Thank you. Roll call.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Item number 2024-172. Counselor Ludke.
Thank you. 2024-172, it's new business, refer to a public hearing on April 4, 2024. Amending the Code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Article 1, Non-Criminal Enforcement of Violations, and inserting a new Chapter 185, known as Stormwater Management and Illicit Discharge Control.
Second. All right. So this is referred to a public hearing April 4, so there's no discussion or anything now. So roll call, please.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And last but not least, item 2024-173. Counselor Starr.
Thank you. This is new business, may be acted upon by a majority vote. This is item number 2024-173, authorization to expend a Meta-12 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources in the amount of $15,000 for the purpose of funding assistance on energy-related projects or renewable energy planning and feasibility evaluations.
Second. For a motion and a second. Hello?
Good evening. David Anthony, Director of Asset Management. I graciously offered to let Sean have the night off. I think he won the better of that deal.
I think so. Short straw.
This is a grant that he was able to find that actually provides some technical assistance that we need in order to apply for a much larger grant. There's a lot of information in the rationale about what we're looking at doing, but this is a large microgrid potential that could connect several school buildings and the adult community center. Maybe we'll get it, maybe we won't, but what we need is a certain layer of technical assistance in order to describe that microgrid and what will work. And this funding grant from MassDUR actually provides us with the resources to do that, and that's the intent of the Meta Grants.
Excellent. Questions, comments? Counselor Turkelson.
So when you say assistance, we'll be hiring somebody to help Sean in this process?
Yeah, we have someone who's kind of on the hook to help us do the technical description of what a microgrid is and how it would be sized for that campus. They're rather substantial buildings. Obviously, the high school is about 400,000 square feet, so there's a certain layer of technical expertise that we need from someone in the industry.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Leveque.
So this is a part of the larger, the federal grant program up to, was it $50 million for two communities, right, was, I think, qualified in the state of Massachusetts, Somerset because of Brayton Point? And we qualify because in what we have to do to actually execute this happening is either participate in Park City Wind and/or Commonwealth Wind to qualify for the larger grant. Is that correct?
We technically qualify for this if we are one of the communities that hosts the infrastructure that comes ashore. Yes. There's a lot that has to happen in order for us to win this grant, things certainly beyond staff's control, but we were able to get to the initial phase and get approval to move to the full phase. So once this gets to that point and it is accepted by the feds, so then we would wait and see if the qualifying events, if Park City Wind or Commonwealth Wind were to happen, then it would follow through. If we don't, if we don't qualify for it because those events don't happen, then this was an exercise that we tried, but we want to be in position so if that were to happen, we could then qualify for this money.
Vineyard Wind, does that qualify?
No, sir. It has to, that one has already kind of passed by.
So it has to be the Park City or Commonwealth Wind? And what is the value of your proposal? Actually, I'm not saying it's $50 million, $49,990.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we're asking for this grant to help determine that value, but back of the envelope is about $18 million.
Okay. Thank you very much. So that would, that could happen if we hook up to one of these projects. Thank you.
Questions, comments, anybody else? No? Roll call.
Counselors. Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
That's 13 yes.
Excellent. Thank you.